At 7:04 PM, the West Windsor Township Planning Board Special Meeting of June 29th is called to order. Cindy, please call the roll.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Here.
Mr. Hoberman?
Here.
Mr. Pankow?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel?
Here.
Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Vice Chairman Karp?
Here.
Mr. Lovero? Ms. Bari?
Thank you. This has announced that this special meeting was noticed in the Times New Jersey, Princeton Packard, West Windsor Plainsboro News on June 8th. It's a continuation of PB 21-15. But before we get started, just a couple of announcements and statements. The first thing I'd like to say is that it's with great sorrow that I announced that our chairman, Gene O'Brien, passed away on June 17th. Gene was a brilliant man, he was a great chairman, and even a better person. Gene was stern when he used to be, but fair in his dealings. Gene came recently to me and he asked me, "Hey Mike, can you fill in for me?" And I know if I can't finish this, you know, these meetings, I know I have confidence in you that you'll be able to do it and fill in. So thank you, Gene, thanks for the confidence, and I hope I do you proud. I ask that we take a moment of silence for Gene, starting now. Thank you, Gene, rest in peace. Our attorney has a couple of brief statements to make before we get started into the meeting.
Thanks, Martina Baileam, counsel to the board. I want to start by acknowledging many of the communications messages, questions, comments, and additional information that we've received from you folks, from interested neighbors and residents, expressing their feelings about this. As I've tried to communicate with as many of you as possible, the public comment period for this hearing was closed on June 1st, and that extended to communications that we received after June 1st. So unfortunately, while I acknowledge receipt of all of those communications, they cannot be admitted, for the same reason that we're not reopening the public hearing for any additional comments. It would be unfair to accept emails without also permitting folks to comment, so the public comment period is closed. But I know there's been a lot of questions on people's minds, and I just want to address a couple of things. Something that a lot of folks asked about were the state warehouse siting guidelines that the State Planning Commission recently issued, that was June 10th, Warehouse Siting Guidance. Many people asked, "Well, how does that impact this application and why are those not being considered?" The simple answer is, they're guidelines, they don't have the force of law, they don't change any existing laws, and most likely, there'd have to be a lot of implementing legislation for them to have the force of law. So they have no bearing whatsoever on this application. The public comment period for those guidelines hasn't run, that ends in July, at the end of July. So a final version of those guidelines hasn't even been issued. The other point I wanted to make was the MLUL clock, which I think some folks have asked about. What that refers to is the period of time in which a planning board has to make a decision, has to take action on an application, either approve it or deny it. And if the board does not take action within that prescribed period, which is ordinarily 45 days, I think it's been extended due to some COVID-related regulations, there's a default approval, that's how the law works. Importantly, it's the applicant that decides and grants permission to extend that clock. It's not the planning board that gets to decide that. And so that clock ends tonight. So today is the last day of the MLUL clock, and this board intends to make a decision this evening. So I hope that clarifies that point.
Okay. Before I just get started, a couple of things. Let's just recap what, you know, how we got here to, how we got here tonight. The first two meetings, we heard the applicant present their application and documentation. The third meeting, we heard from our township professionals. The fourth meeting, we heard public comments, question statements. And along the way, our attorneys, Jerry and now Martina, have been taking copious notes with and recording the conditions and waivers, all with the planning board asking questions along the way, and probing and modifying and adding. So that brings us to tonight's meeting. Tonight, just to let you know what's going to happen, I'll entertain a motion. I'll hear a second of that motion. The board will then discuss the 82 conditions we've compiled, and raise any additional conditions or amendments as they think necessary. The board will deliberate on those conditions and list of waivers. The board will consider any additional conditions brought up by the planning board members. In some cases, we may have further debate, we may change, we may amend the conditions, and as necessary, vote on individual conditions. After the vote on this application, we'll open a meeting up to public comments on non-agenda items. The limit will be total of 15 minutes or three minutes per person. And this is very important. I know that there's a lot of passion in the audience, a lot of opinions. We cannot tolerate any interruptions or impediment of this meeting. Any person that is deemed to be disruptive will be asked to leave, and if necessary, will be escorted from the room. I will be tolerant to a degree. In the previous meeting, I let people speak after their time was up to finish their thought. And I'll be fair, but I cannot tolerate any interruption that disrupts the meeting. I'm just letting you know all in advance now. Okay, with that, let's get started. All the board members have copies of the conditions, waivers? I'll entertain a motion.
As the chairman said, unless there's a motion on the table, we can't start discussion. So I will start, I will move to approve proposal PB 21-15 with the conditions that were posted on the township website, and as they will be amended during our discussion.
I second it. Well, okay, let's have some deliberations. Let's, we'll turn to the list of design waivers first. There are 14 design waivers. Does any member of the board wish to discuss any of the design waivers? Any amendments, additions, changes, debate?
I do.
Okay, sure, Alan, go ahead.
Okay. In terms of the design waivers, I guess the, yeah, let me...
Please speak into the mic.
In terms of the design waivers, essentially, the standard for reviewing it is reasonableist. Now, two design waivers, which I really object to, is that with regard to signage, going from 48 square feet to 60 square feet, and then going from four foot in height to 16 foot in height, I don't think it...
Is that, is that one of, which number is that on design waiver? That may be a condition, Alan.
It's five and six.
Okay, fine.
Okay, so from my perspective, when you look at these buildings, they're mammoth. They're mammoth in size, they're 44 foot in height, they're a third of a mile in length, for the most part. If anybody driving a truck can't see the site, you know, he really needs to have glasses or be reexamined, because the sign is really totally unnecessary. Yeah, the sign is totally, the sign increase is totally unnecessary, from that perspective. The site will be highly visible to anybody, so I think our standards should be upheld.
And that goes for both number five and number six. So number five is permit to maximum on the sign, including structure of 48 square feet. The applicant's asking for 60 feet, that's number five. And, I'm sorry?
Square feet.
Square feet, yes, area. And in number six... Sure. In number six, it's going from the structure and sign area of four feet, proposing 16 feet for the monument sign. Any other board member have any comments about it? So, do we want to take a, do I want to take, Alan, would you suggest we take a vote on this? You're very strong, does anybody else have an opinion?
I'm really strong about that.
Okay. So let's, let's take a vote on number five and six, whether we want to accept those design waivers. Cindy, please call, please call the roll on accepting or rejecting five and six design waivers.
Okay, could you just clarify, are we voting yes on the waiver?
Yes to grant the waiver?
Or no means don't grant the waiver?
Don't grant the waiver.
So you, he's suggesting not to grant the waiver?
Alan would like, is strong on not granting the waivers for number five and six.
And I assume we could separate them out, too?
That's fine, let's vote on number five first. Cindy, please call the roll on whether to accept the design waiver on number five.
So, so, hold on one second, just to clarify, so if you wish, yeah, if you vote yes, that means you accept that waiver.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the design waiver, and let me hear a second, maybe there's no vote necessary. Do I hear a motion to reject number five? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this? All in favor of rejecting the sign, the number five waiver, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Please louder, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, now, waiver number five is rejected. Same, do I have a motion to reject sign, design waiver number six?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor of rejecting design waiver number six, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? So moved, number six, design waiver is rejected. Okay, are there any other comments, debate, deliberations, amendments, changes on the remaining 12 design waivers? Please, please reserve your comments. The board has the same list that was posted, and the board can make the determination whether they want to debate, change, mod, reject, thank you. If I don't, it, um, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the design waivers for the remaining 12 items, one, two, three, and seven through 14.
I'll make the motion to accept design waivers one through four and seven through 14.
Unless I hear otherwise, anybody second it?
Seconded.
Okay, motion by mayor, second by Annis, to accept the remaining design waivers. Cindy, please, please, for this, please call the vote.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Hoberman?
Yes.
Mr. Pankow?
Yes.
Mr. Schichtel?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Karp?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, let's move on, let's move on to the 82 conditions, and I know, Andrea, you passed out some modification or changes you would like. So what I want to do is, obviously, we can't, can vote on each individual condition, some of them were crafted during the previous meetings, and modified to what our desires and what our debate was at the meetings. So what I'm going to do is, they're divided into sections, the first one being site plan, right? And so the site plan has one through, one through 12. I'll ask the board, is there anyone on the board, does any issues or amendments to the site plan conditions as worded in the hand, in the handout? Alan, sure, go ahead.
It's basically number four.
Sure.
I have a problem with this, because I think it leads to, I think it's ambiguous, for example, it says any, it says any significant changes subsequent to this approval will require an amended approval, and an application therefore shall be submitted to the township. First of all, what is a significant change? And secondly, who defines that? And is that done in a vacuum, just with the board making that change? With board member or with the staff suggesting that? I think it's, it's very, very ambiguous. I mean, it feels good saying it, but in reality...
No, I, I hear you, significant is a kind of, yeah.
The council would be...
So, if I may, it would be the same standard that's applied if the applicant makes significant or material, if you want to use that term, change to an application prior to a vote, in which case, the board would have to consider what that change was, and if it materially changed the site plan that was being proposed, and the applicant would have to then renotice or, you know, resubmit the application.
I have, I have to kind of agree with Alan, significant is ambiguous. I mean, even if you use the word material changes, I mean, who define, who defines it? Right, who defines what's material? The applicant raises their hand and says, "Wait a second, I don't agree to that, that's a material change," or, I mean, so how do we get around this?
Who defines that for everything else right now?
That's a good question.
I mean, those questions typically would come through council, although they may, or they might originate with the staff, who have to weigh in on something, and then, you know, the question has to be referred to the council if there's a question as to the the significance or materiality of a change to the site plan.
So you're saying our attorney, or?
Yes, yeah, the board's attorney, that's right.
So would we put, what would we put here to amend this, to make it less ambiguous?
Yeah, I would have to agree with Alan, Andrea Simon raises his hand. I think, I think we need, and I'm seeing a lot of nods from the other members. What language can we put in there to make it more concrete as far as what constitutes a significant or material change?
Say any suggested changes need to be reviewed by the planning board attorney, and that attorney will determine whether an amended approval... That attorney will determine whether an amended approval is necessary, in which case, a new application or an amended application will be submitted to the township planning board after review by township staff.
Is that acceptable, Martina?
I think we could modify that, yes, and I would modify it that the, that the attorney, the board attorney in consultation with municipal staff would make that determination.
I mean, that sounds reasonable, Alan, you're okay with that additional language, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay. So, so, so far, in one through 12, we have some amended language that Martina has, has, has taken down the language, and will make some changes there. Any other?
Could you please read that change in number four?
So, so it would read, any, any, any change that's deemed significant as determined by the board attorney in consultation with municipal staff subsequent to this approval will require an amended approval, and an application therefore shall be submitted.
Thank you. Okay. In the remaining conditions, in the site plan section of the condition list, are there any other planning board members that would like to make comments, changes, amend, or further debate?
I had a question on number 10, did we determine that the eight-foot-high fence is a wooden fence? I know there was discussion. I'm talking in...
You gotta talk really closer than the mic, Sue.
Number 10, it says, "The applicant shall work with the township staff on the type of eight-foot-high wooden fence that is behind the vegetation on Quaker Bridge Road." I know there was discussion between wooden fence and, and other types of fence. Was wooden the ultimate decision? I'm talking as loud as I can.
I'm allowed to, I'm allowed, okay. Okay. Okay, I'll just reiterate what Sue is saying. She's questioning whether the type of fence in number, issue number 10, wooden, I think what I'm, I think you're getting at, Sue, is that why, why just wooden? Why not kind of decide different types of fences that may be the best? Yeah, David?
Mr. Chair, for the record, this is David Novak with Burgess Associates, the township planning consultant. I do have in my notes that the applicant could work with township professionals on the fence material and design, so I think Ms. Applegate is correct with that.
Okay, so we're going to strike the word wooden out there and just add that language, that applicant and township professionals will work together to decide the correct type of material the fence will be constructed of. And Sue, you're okay with that?
That's fine, thank you.
Anybody else on, so right now, 11 and 12 is left, unless there's a previous condition that... Anybody, 11, 12? Okay, I'll entertain, so like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I'll take, I'll entertain motions to approve the site plan conditions as amended during the discussion. All in favor of the site plan conditions as amended, please say. Well, I'll take a motion to accept all those site plan conditions, actually.
So moved.
So anybody second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Andrea, second by Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, any nays, abstentions, okay. So the site plan conditions, one through 12, are approved as amended. Okay, the, the next group of, the next group of conditions to discuss is traffic, access, circulation, and parking, which is numbers 13 through 34. I think that's right. Okay.
I have a number of modifications and then some additions.
Okay, why don't we do this? I think some of them are going to merit in-depth discussions, so let's try to go to the low-hanging fruit, and let's try to see if we can kind of just accept the ones that, Andrea, you, you had, you have no, maybe additional language, and, right? So, let me just look at what you passed out.
Some, some of these tend to build on each other, so...
Okay, so you know what, so then, so then, let's just, let's discuss. Let's discuss number 13.
What I'm proposing is to leave 13, but I'm adding an A and a B section to it, and the attorney can decide how to number that at some point. For 13A, I'm adding, "Until Avalon Road and Quaker Bridge Road's signalized intersection is approved by all parties according to the plan, no warehouse construction shall begin on either Phase 1 or Phase 2." And then I'm adding a sister to that, 13B, which is, "Until the master planned road is fully construction, constructed and operational as per plans, with all access to both Route 1 and the signalized intersection of Quaker Bridge and Avalon, no warehouse shall receive a certificate of occupancy."
Okay. Open for discussion. Alan, sure, go ahead.
Mike?
Yeah.
I would like to also add, she said, "No warehouse will receive a certificate of occupancy or a TCO, Temporary Certificate of Occupancy."
Okay, you're okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, Alan, you want to add something?
Okay. In looking at what was proposed, I was looking at 13, the original 13. First of all, I think it's a great condition, because it prohibits the construction of either Phase 1 or Phase 2 until NJDOT approves the connection to Route 1.
Alan?
Alan, please speak.
Okay. Alan, we're not removing that condition?
I'm sorry?
That's not being removed? We're adding, we're adding, I'm adding additional.
I know, would you let me finish?
Okay, he agrees with you.
I agree with you. It's a great condition, however, I believe that NJDOT, as well as county approvals, are considered outside agency approvals, which can't be used to hold up an applicant. Similarly, like NJDEP approvals, you can't hold up an approval based upon getting an NJDEP approval. So if you're going to approve this application without these items in place, and I don't think you, you can force the developer to do this, you are in the situation where you've granted approval for five and a half billion, for five and a half million square feet of warehouses, without knowing how local traffic is going to be affected if DOT fails to...
Okay, last one, please, hold off on your oohs and ahs until later.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, so basically, what I'm saying is, it feels good to say this, but we're going to be in a position where if DOT turns it down, you're not going to know where that traffic is going to go. They're going to have to come back for modifications, which may not be to our liking, because now... you're not going to know where that traffic is going to go. They're gonna have to come back for modifications, which may not be to our liking, because now they have an approval for five and a half million square feet. You can't take that away from them once you do this.
But once.
That's my comment.
If this isn't approved by DOT, they can't construct the warehouse if they.
They can. I'm sorry, I totally disagree with you, Andrea. From my understanding of the way the municipal land use law works, you can't hold up an applicant based upon an outside agency approval.
Alan, but.
I, I believe that's correct. Certainly, outside agency approvals can be made conditions of approval, but the conditions have to be reasonable with respect to the applicant's ability to actually build its project. And I understand that DOT has a, has a very extensive delay, potentially up to two years or more in, in the issuance of its permit.
With that point, can the applicant come in with a different plan?
I think they would have to, yes.
So if DOT doesn't approve, does the applicant just say, well, they haven't approved, I'm building anyway, or does the applicant come in with a totally different plan to the planning board? And then we look at it again as an alternate?
I, I would agree with the statement that this site plan cannot be built without the master planned road.
Without what?
Without the master planned road and the connection to Route 1.
So are you saying we can put this in?
So the applicant, without it, the applicant would have to come back to the board.
So then the applicant has the opportunity to see if DOT is approving the plan, and if DOT comes back with something different, then that's a change to the plan and the applicant would have to come back to this board and show us what the new plan is. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, the, the issue is, I understand it, is as to timing, and what I understood was that the applicant is proposing not to, not to be able to begin construction on Phase 1 pending the application, the DOT application. That's what I had understood from the testimony. I think what you're proposing is something that goes further that says, no construction can start on Phase 1 until until that road is fully constructed.
So what happens if the applicant builds the whole building and the DOT says, builds the road up to two feet from Route 1 and DOT says, you know, go for a hike, and there's a building sitting there?
I think they would have to come back to the board for an amended approval.
But the board would have no obligation to to accept it without, you know, without that road?
I think that's correct. The risk would be the applicants.
I mean, I, I would, I would like to get something on the record that was discussed during the earlier meetings. Either the first or second meeting, the applicant did admit that there's some chance that the DOT may not grant them approval. That the applicant's engineer admitted that. And there was never a discussion at TRC of having this application without a connection to Route 1. I mean, our professionals can dispute if that is wrong, but there was never a discussion without having a connection to Route 1. So if they don't get connection to Route 1, then whatever they are building is not what is approved by the township. And I don't see how they can simply go ahead and build and not come into the planning board, because that would be applicable to any applicant that they will say, hey, we didn't get approval from DOT, so we are going to go ahead and build anyway. What's the point of considering the application which shows a connection to Route 1? And I don't see how they can build it without connection to Route 1, because the application we are approving is the application with connection to Route 1. If they don't get connection to Route 1, that's not the application that this board may approve later today. So I don't see how they can build an, build a, a project that's not approved by the board. I mean, the, the condition says that they can't even get a permit to build a building. And the reason for that is to protect the township that they don't end up with a building and then have no approval from DOT. I mean, that's the reason. If there was guaranteed to get approval from DOT, then that's a different matter, but even the applicant admitted on record that there's some chance, maybe small chance, that DOT won't approve, so I don't have any problem putting condition that they can't get a, a permit to construct the warehouse without getting a DOT approval. Then we are at least guaranteed that they will have access to Route 1. Because during the whole discussion, most of the traffic, and I'll comment when other conditions come along, but whole discussion was most of the traffic will go to Route 1 and most of the traffic will go to Quaker Bridge Road.
It's a totally different application if there's no road there.
So, Martina?
I guess that would be a material change, as we just discussed.
Yeah, it would be.
And would have to be discussed with the professionals and council.
So, so Martina, then, what, what is being said here is that they can build the building at this point? And even if they don't have the connection to Route 1? Or we're gonna end up holding them up for, let's say, two years before DOT makes up their mind? So that's unreasonable. So, I guess the question I have is, let's say DOT says no, they have built the building, we're gonna tell them that they can't occupy a million and a half square foot building? I, I mean, I think that's unrealistic.
I mean, Alan, I think the condition is they can't even get a permit to build the building. So I don't know how they are going to construct the building.
Well, the condition is there's no building of any warehouses until there's access and, and permit for access to Route 1?
I, I don't agree.
You don't agree that it can be done, right?
I, I agree that, I don't agree that you could hold them up.
Okay, let me ask you, let me ask you this way. Let's forget about whether we can hold them up or not. Do you agree with that condition that no warehouse should be built without a permit and the construction or access to Route 1 granted by department, you agree with that, right?
As I said in my opening statement, I said it makes me feel good to see it, but the reality of that, I question.
I, I think, I'm not trying to sway or shape anybody's vote, but I think we should vote what we think is right, and then that kind of stuff will get sorted out later on. I think if there's a condition, if there's a condition to hold up the construction of the warehouse prior to DOT permit approval, then we should, you should, you should say yes, yes to that condition. Right?
I, I understand that. I understand what you're saying. I don't believe it's, it's correct.
You, you don't believe that if, if the board was to, was to read to this condition, no warehouse construction without access to Route 1? Right, right? You don't believe that condition would be?
I don't think it's legal, quite frankly.
Okay.
That, that's where I stand on that. I'm sorry to be giving my legal advice, it's just.
What about the, a, a condition that would permit the, the beginning of construction on Phase 1? And concurrently with the construction of the master planned road, and if the DOT approval is denied, then the applicant has to come back to the board? And then the risk, the risk is on it, the risk is on the applicant?
I, I mean, if that, if they can't put that road there, the only way they're gonna do this is probably have to move these warehouses around to different spots to put a totally different road somewhere else, so why would anybody even want to build a warehouse? And then find that there's no way we would ever let them open it up?
I mean, I, I would, I would impose that condition, because that condition is important. I don't want to end up with a warehouse with no access to Route 1, because.
I would agree with that.
As, as we discussed earlier, I mean, that would be a significant change and they will have to come back anyway. Even if whatever happens, they will have to come back to the board anyway. So I would, I would impose that condition along with the 13A that Andrea read.
I, I like what Andrea, I like what you added. Simon, do you have some comments?
I, I, I'm just, I mean, I, I understand and I agree that, that if we do the warehouse there, it should have a connection to Route 1.
Okay.
I just don't agree that we can hold up the applicant if, if the board approves this application. I'm just saying, if they approve the application, you know, I mean, okay, if you deny the application, you know, there, there's no issue, but if you if, if you approve the application, you put the applicant in a, in a legal situation where they're dependent on an outside agency approving an access to Route 1, which is not, which is not something that they can control, and that's not something that the applicant is gonna be happy with, because that, that's not, that, that's an outside agency.
Please.
The other thing is, I remember from the testimony of Carl Pinky, the, the applicant's traffic consultant, he indicated that their warehouse application worked with all the roads even without a connection to Route 1.
Yeah, it worked by the traffic going along the road.
I remember him saying that, okay? Now, I, you know, I, I, I question that, but I'm, I'm just giving you what I heard when he, when he testified, okay? And I, you know, it's like, okay, fine, the app, the application goes forward without a, a connection to Route 1, and according to Carl's design and, and Carl's analysis, it, it quote-unquote works.
But that's not what they submitted to us. They submitted to us an access to Route 1. It may work for them, but it doesn't work for us.
Okay, so far everybody agrees that that's a good condition as amended by Andrea, yet the question is whether some of the planning board members think it's legal and can hold up the application?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, let, let me make a point. Okay, we put that condition and we are making clear now that at least everybody agrees that if they don't get access to Route 1, they have to come back to the planning board. There's no dispute about that. They can't simply go ahead and build the warehouse and start operating without connection to Route 1. There's no dispute about that, because that's a significant change. I mean, nobody will call it a minor change. And what the board is making clear is unless they have an access to Route 1, they cannot operate. So in the worst-case situation, if they build a warehouse, they are taking a chance and building a warehouse which they may have to tear it down without, without ever anybody occupying it, simply because they don't have an access to Route 1. I mean, I, 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 I don't see why, why anybody would take that chance and build that warehouse.
How would they, how would they get the permits to start construction without?
No, that's why I'm saying, I'm, I fully support that condition and I fully support the condition that 13A and 13B that Andrea added and what Sue modified, added to that. I fully, I fully support that and that, that gives us a protection that unless they have access to Route 1, in fact, later on when we talk about the condition, the letter from the Langone Engineering, May 31st, in fact, indicate that they can operate without connection to Clarksville Road as well. So I'll read it when we come to that condition. So I would, I would like to keep the.
So, so, so Mayor, any, any, any other comments on condition number 13, other than what's amended by Andrea and Sue's added? Anybody? I'll entertain, you know, I'll take a vote on this, you know, condition and.
Are we voting on the condition with the two additions to them?
Yes, please. I'll take a motion to to approve condition number 13 as amended by Andrea's A and B and Sue's added temporary certificate occupancy. And the condition is, "Until DOT issues a permit for the construction of the connection between the master planned road and Route 1, no warehouse construction shall begin on either Phase 1 or Phase 2." And Andrea, if you can just add anything.
Wait, wait, there's a, there's a part A, part B.
And then in addition to that, there would be A, or maybe this will be A, B, and C, however, "Until Avalon Road and Quaker Bridge signalize, Quaker Bridge Road signalized intersection is approved by all parties according to plans, no warehouse construction shall begin on either Phase 1 or Phase 2." And then 13B, additional would be, "Until master planned road is fully construction and operational as per plans with all access to both Route 1 and the signalized intersection of Quaker Bridge and Avalon, no warehouse shall receive a certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy."
Do I hear, do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
I, I'm wondering if you bring the motion.
I thought Andrea made the motion. Andrea, did you make the motion? Did you make the motion 13, 13A, 13B?
Okay. Did you have a question?
Hold on a second, Simon has a question.
Okay, I, I'm just wondering if the wording might be simplified to just have one, not A and a B, but just say that no warehouse construction certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy shall, shall whatever. And just make it in one. Just have, just have one condition.
I just separated Route 1, separated the Avalon intersection and then put something about the entire roadway working, and then that was a certificate of that the entire roadway working is certificate of occupancy and TCO. The construction is for the individual pieces. If somebody wants to.
I, I think the A and B is okay, because what happens is if you have the access to Route 1, but you don't have the master planned road, then you have access to Route 1, but no road going through the, the development.
So basically looking both ends of it to be operational before we have any kind of.
Just to, let's, let's do, I'll take a motion to approve 13A as, as amended by Andrea's A and B and Sue's temporary CO. Do I have a motion to approve that condition number 13?
Mike, before you do, sorry, and I just want to understand 13B, and so the the idea is that construction on the warehouses can begin pending DOT approval, is that right?
No, 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 no. What, this is assuming there's approval, but now we're talking about master planned road being fully constructed before, what, the approval is a separate item.
Okay, but a certificate of occupancy follows construction, so I think we have to be precise.
But what I'm saying is until the roads are constructed, constructed, there will be no certificate of occupancy. The first one refers to Jerry's original refers to getting approval for the road, they can't start construction. Once the road is approved, if they want to simultaneously construct the road while they're constructing the warehouse, I don't think we have an issue with that, but they can't open up the warehouse until the entire road is constructed and operational. And, and that was the plan, that was what I'm saying here with B. So the first one is all about, the first one is approval. What, what I've done with the first one is 13 talks about the Route 1 intersection. 13A, which is maybe why we should just use A, B, and C, 13A talks about the other intersection on the other side, which is Avalon and Quaker Bridge Road. That's getting the same treatment as Route 1. Then we're going to, both, once both of those ends are approved and, and they have all the permissions and all of the agreement on them, then we say, before we can actually actually, you can construct the warehouse once you have all the approvals. Then, then the last one is saying, once the whole road is operational and working, then you can get your certificate of occupancy. I don't want anything opening up until we have a complete road going from one end to the other, from Quaker Bridge through to Route 1.
I think what, Martine, Martina, I think what, I, I see what your concern is that.
If you want to change the wording?
There, there, no, 13B is. There, there, no, 13B is, is conditional on all, all the other things happening. It's not in isolation, it can, so what your concern is that no, um, the warehouse, if the, if the master plan road is constructed, then the warehouse receives a certificate of occupancy. But no, all the other things have to happen, am I right? Before, uh, B happens, before they get certificate of occupancy.
Right, first we need all the approvals before they can construct. Then before they can be operational, we need operational road.
Okay.
Is that clear in here? If not, we could rewrite it or?
It could be rewritten by Martine who conversed the language. I think the, the gist of the condition is that warehouse construction and occupancy should not happen until all the access and intersections are approved and, and workable. Is, is that kind of sum it up?
Yeah, it's, it's two things. One is no construction until we have approvals and no, uh, occupancy until we have operational.
Right, so all the roads, all the roads, DOT approvals, intersections at the various points have to be approved and working and constructed prior to warehouse constructions and occupancy. That's the gist of the condition, right? That make sense?
Everybody understand that?
Yeah, okay, I'll entertain a mo, Martine will draft the language of, you know, that captures that, uh, you know, that condition. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve that condition as amended and, uh, written by our, our planning board attorney.
Am I allowed to do that or?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, so move.
Any second.
Second.
Okay, Andrea made the motion second, uh, by the mayor. Cindy, can you just, can you call a roll on this condition, please?
So we are voting on 13, 13A, 13B, right?
This is 13, well, 13, 13A and B by Andrea is just going to be added into the master list of 13. Do you all on to 13, Martine? We're voting on 13.
So are we voting on the amendment or are we voting on?
Voting on the condition with amendments as discussed.
So it's.
And it was condition number 13 on our, uh, list of conditions. And whatever we add to it, if it comes from your list of 13A and B and any other discussions, it'll be added into condition number 13. So Cindy, can you please call the roll to vote, uh, for approval on condition number 13 under traffic access, circulation, and parking?
Mayor Marate?
Yes.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandel?
Yes.
Mr. Hoberman?
Yes.
Mr. Pankov?
Yes.
Mr. Shikatell?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Carr?
Yes. Motion carries eight to zero. Okay, number, number, number 14. I, I, I just want to add something that maybe the board has, um, picked up on for number 14. And, you know, it'll just maybe prompt everybody to kind of discuss, right? So for number 14, right? It was, oh, you know what? I'm looking at number 15, I'm ahead of myself here, so, sorry. So, um, number 14, Andrea, I know you had some.
Yeah, um, this is a little bit more change in wording to make it very explicit. So not, I don't think I'm changing too much of the meaning. 14, signage shall be installed at locations and in a form acceptable to the township engineer and the township traffic engineer barring turns eastbound in the direction, in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road by trucks from the development directly onto Clarksville Road from the master plan road with accompanying geometry changes as necessary to the intersection of Clarksville Road and the master plan road to create a physical barrier on both sides of Clarksville to prevent trucks turning in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. Turning rules shall be enforceable by West Windsor Police. Essentially, um, what that does is it prevents, um, any trucks from turning either right or left from, uh, onto Clarksville Road in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. And also provides for physical barriers so that trucks can't just ignore, um, those, those, uh, signs and provides for the police to enforce the signs.
Okay, Alan, you had some discussion on signage previously, do any issues or?
Well, I, I wasn't clear on whether or not the county had jurisdiction over that. And that's, that's the key thing. We could put up our own signs on our own roads and on their internal roads. But even though, I mean, it's going to be in the right of way.
He's talking to microphone, Alan.
It's going to be in the right of way of the county. And I don't believe that the county is going to go along with those restrictions. If they're not going to restrict traffic coming off of 571, making a left-hand turn onto, uh, Clarksville Road going south, I think it's, they're not going to do it going north either. And, uh, that would be after they invest money in terms of doing culverts that would allow for the increase of truck traffic. And the new bridge perhaps over the railroad at some point. So I don't think what is being suggested, number one, passes legal muster. And number two, I don't believe that you, unless you have a policeman sitting there 24 hours a day, they're going to make the left-hand turns whether you like it or not.
Well, Andrea, Andrea said.
What I'm trying to do here is to put, just like any other road where you don't want somebody to make a left or a right, you put, uh, physical curbs and not allowing those particular trucks to go that way. You make it too thin for trucks, there's, there's a lot of physical design.
I understand the geometry issue. However, the county has to approve that intersection. Uh, and they have to approve the geometrics where it meets the county road.
Well, we were told by the attorney that we could enforce that because that was a, a matter of several weeks of discussion. And I know that was the advice we got.
But I think there was also a response that they didn't want any geometric changes.
Not the, by our attorney?
I believe the applicant indicated that might be a dangerous situation that you're creating.
There's places like that all, all over, I'm not sure what the danger would be.
Well, because, yes, trucks want to go back to where they came from. And they're going to go, they're going to make a left, whether you like it or not, they'll hop the curb. They'll do these things. I've, I've seen that happen, you've seen that happen. And, um, and I, I think it's a great idea, but I don't think it's legally enforceable.
Can, we, we were told by Jerry that this would be legally enforceable under Title 39. Does anybody have any comments on that?
If I, if I may comment, the board has jurisdiction over the ingress and egress on the site. That much is clear. What's not or less clear is where the township's jurisdiction or the, the planning board's jurisdiction ends and the county's begins. Um, I think, um, the county would have to agree. Um, and so any condition would probably have to be subject to that agreement.
Yeah, I mean, uh, it was suggested earlier in the first or second hearing that, like Amazon has done in Robbinsville, there are some roads where only car can go. They are smaller than the, where trucks can't accommodate. It was suggested to them that they do something like that. And the applicant had agreed that they would give us Title 39 and agree not that the trucks won't, can't turn left or right towards, uh, 571 from that warehouse. And Jerry had also said that we can enforce that whether county requires that or not. The West Windsor Police can enforce that rule. That Jerry had confirmed that, uh, either first or second hearing. So at least that gives us a teeth. I don't know if the policeman will sit there four hours or 24 hours, but at least that gives us a, a teeth to enforce that, that no trucks turn that way.
I like what Andrea has suggested here. In a sense, I, I call it, uh, truck driver behavior modification. We don't want trucks going up, uh, Clarksville Road. We want you to go up Highway 1. So I see it as, uh, yet another effort on our behalf, despite what Alan says about the possible illegality of it, another effort on our behalf to keep the trucks off of Clarksville Road.
And, and I do want to point out that this really hasn't changed the meaning of what Jerry had agreed to in, in the, um, uh, conditions that were up on the web. These just described them in a little bit more detail. So, uh, he's, he has, he had reviewed them. And I do want to point out that the applicant had agreed to signs to not turn in that direction. There was some question with them. I know they were questioning about the county. I know they were questioning, uh, you know, will, will the truck drivers listen and, and can we put? And then yes, we'll put a barrier, but not too big a barrier. So there had needs to be some discussion with our engineers, but I think there was general, uh, agreement on, on doing this very basic thing to prevent the trucks from going in that direction. And so what I've, um, this has been modified several times to try to put more teeth into it, but essentially the, the theory behind it, um, has been, has been pretty much the same.
Mr. Chair? It's Francis Guzik, Township Engineer. So I just wanted to offer a little comment on this that, um, I think with the original intent of number 14 was to address all the site driveways coming out the Clarksville Road. But with Andrea's proposed modification, she's made it specific to just Avalon Way and Clarksville Road, which gets rid of no left turns or no trucks heading towards, uh, Princeton Heights Town Road for all those other driveways. So I think if anything, if you're going to do it, 14 should be left to apply for the site driveways. And 14 as modified by Andrea would be a 14A. And I think, as was pointed out by Alan, would have to be subject to Mercer County Planning Board approval or Mercer County Engineers' approval. Because typically, county jurisdiction on intersections include all the stacking on the side streets that come into the county intersection as well. It's not just following curb to curb.
Francis, I'm a little confused because, uh, 15 takes out those other four roads. So they're not in play in this, that's, that's why they were removed from this originally? We're, we're removing the roads?
I'll just make a comment about 15, Francis. According to the, you know, I was reading up on, on the settlement. And according to the settlement, only one exit is allowed on Clarksville Road. And if that's the case, then number 15 makes no additional curb cuts. And it'd be one exit and then that exit could be controlled.
Mike, the settlement agreement does not govern this application. Whatever's in the settlement agreement does not determine what this board can do or can't do.
Okay.
I, I don't understand if the original agreement, we only said there had to be two roads. Can't this board only approve the two, the road on each side?
Sorry, I didn't hear that, Andrea, because you, there's a lot of feedback on your microphone.
I said, I'm not sure I understand. There was a, there was a settlement agreement which involved only one cross of Clarksville Road. One road on one side, one master plan road on one side, master plan road on the other. There were never four additional, um, exits onto Clarksville. And I assume that the board doesn't need to approve any additional exits onto Clarksville. Is there anything holding us to do that?
Andrea, what she's saying is you can impose 15, but you don't have to use settlement agreement as a justification for 15.
Oh, okay, you're saying we can do it, but we don't have to. But we are pointing, I think I was just pointing out that.
Pointing it out.
It was pointing it out that the original agreement only had, had that. Okay, good, thank you.
So it brings us back to 14. Do we need further discussion on that, um, whether it's enforceable or not?
So, Chairman, can I ask a question? So what you're suggesting is keep 14 and then add 14A?
Well, my, my, originally, yes. My concern with number 15 is I don't know if emergency services would support your proposal that there's no driveway intersections allowing emergency services to come in from Clarksville directly to a building other than coming in to the master plan road and going up the master plan road and turning into a driveway or a site driveway. It may be more direct access and a better response for emergency services if they're able to come right off of Clarksville through a driveway to a building site rather than, uh, turning onto the master plan road.
They can only, they can always build only emergency vehicle road, right?
Well, right, they could, they could make the curb cut driveway road just as an emergency access driveway.
I'm fine with adding that, that only emergency access curb cut would be allowed if, if, if the emergency, if the, uh, our fire department so deems necessary.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so, so let me just recap that. So basically, 14 is fine, add Andrea's 14A, but get approval from emergency.
This is a replacement, this 14?
No, I think, uh, I think your 14 is going to be, uh, in addition to number 14 on our conditions. Is that right, Francis?
Um, no, they, they kind of say the same thing.
No, if, if, uh, if you're not going to allow any driveways other than emergency access driveways, then Andrea's 14 should be the 14 you're voting on, subject to Mercer County approval. And then 15 would be modified for.
Emergency.
Emergency access.
Okay, so then, so, uh, Simon's nodding yes. Do I hear agreement on Andrea's number 14 replacing the 14 on our list? Got a nod from.
Yeah, uh, can I ask a question? Now, you don't need permission from Mercer County to put signs inside the, inside the development. You need Mercer County permission to do changes to Clarksville Road. But they can still insist on no left-hand signs.
On the, on the approaches to the intersection where cars would stack waiting to turn left, right, or go straight when the signal's red, that would be subject to county approval. That those, so basically you have a T shape that would be their jurisdiction, not just straight up and down if you're looking at the intersection from an area. So it would include the signage for all four legs of that intersection.
No, but no trucks left-hand turn, that needs county approval. I understand the cars and with the left-hand, and then all that's controlled by the county.
I believe it would include that signage and would include whatever proposed, uh, physical modifications you want to make that would prohibit that left turn.
Now, master plan road is going to be a private road? But under West Windsor jurisdiction, correct?
It would be similar to Nassau Park Boulevard, yes, except for the intersection itself.
Okay, so from what I understand, just to recap, Andrea's 14 replaces the 14 on the condition. Number 15 will be, we'll get to number 15 in a moment, but it'll be modified to include emergency access as, uh, as discussed with the, um, township, uh, officials. Is that, is that, is that right? Is that what you understand?
Yeah, yeah, emergency management coordinator.
Yes, and what I think I heard Francis say was that the, um, the proposed modified 14 would be subject to county approval. That had to be added.
Okay, but, all right, so are we going ahead with 14 as is?
No, your 14.
My 14.
Your 14 will replace the 14 on the condition.
Well, I mean, we're going ahead with the 14 I had put in?
Yes.
What?
I, I will, I will read 14 as proposed by Andrea. 14, signage shall be installed at locations and in a form acceptable to the township engineer and the township traffic engineer barring turns eastbound in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road by trucks from the development directly onto Clarksville Road from the master plan road with accompanying geometry changes as necessary to the intersection of Clarksville Road and the master plan road to create a physical barrier on both sides of Clarksville to prevent trucks turning in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. Turning rules shall be enforceable by West Windsor Police.
Okay. I'm sorry. We can't have, hold on a second. We can't have comments shouted out by the audience. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Is that, is that east or is it really north? Because doesn't it, isn't that in the northerly direction?
I thought we decided that Clarksville was north and south. I agree, Simon.
So it should be in, in the northbound direction.
There were some change, Jerry had originally put some stuff, and I believe there were some changes by the applicant as to what was east and what was north. And I think he put some of those in here. So that's one of the, yeah, I, he took, they had a difference. He, he changed it, and that's one of the reasons I specifically said in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road, because there seemed to be a little bit of confusion there between them. So.
The other question that I had about this is that this condition takes care of truck traffic coming out of the site in the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road. It does nothing about a condition that brings traffic in from Princeton Heights Town Road to the site. Is there a way that we can create another condition?
I personally have looked and tried different conditions, including eliminating allowing trucks to come in, a list of that. I've been pretty much told they're not going to work very well. So I have some other conditions to look at in the future for that. But we could, we could try that, but they didn't seem to work very well and were very difficult to enforce. If you, if you've got one, I'd love to, no, you know, because I have tried several, just personally. But if anyone else has one, I'm very, very open personally to it, and I'm sure everybody would.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve condition number 14 as amended by Andrea.
He is.
Can you, can you take, can you?
He said it's the.
Sure. He's just pointing out that we said that it would be subject to county approval.
I don't remember agreeing to that.
And this was Francis, I think, is of the view that the county would have, the county's approval would be required.
We got specific opinions from the attorney.
Andrea, what he's saying is county approval is needed for intersection changes, not for barring left turn and right turn. Those are two different things.
Where would you put that in?
If you want to put an additional one separately, that's perfectly fine. What he's saying is you need county approval to change Clarksville. That's why I thought the original 14 did that. I, I was going to suggest to take out by county approval in the original 14, because the original 14 did say that, that there will be signs that the trucks can turn towards Princeton Heights Town Road. And I have a note to myself that that doesn't need county approval to turn.
The original 14 didn't have that in there. I think there was some red line. Jerry put it back in there, but I don't know where, I, I wasn't involved in any of that. But I don't know where that came back and forth, but the intent was to remove it when we, when we modified this?
No, this is, this is, you, this 14 as it's in this document, it says that they have to put signs not to turn towards Princeton Heights Town Road. And that was my question, whether the signs inside the development need any approval from the county, because it, it says to the extent acceptable to the county.
Okay, so do you want to, so you're saying that the signs and everything are okay, but then when it comes to the geometry changes, that they will be, that they will have to be acceptable to the county?
They have to, yes.
So.
That's the way I understand it.
So then, if we did something like the company, so then where it says, where the company geometry changes as necessary to the intersection of, like after geometry changes, should we put something like in parentheses as approved by the county and, and our engineers or something is necessary to the intersection? Would that work? That's not, no, that's not the way we've understood it.
Development side.
I'm sorry, but Francis said that the approaches to the.
Can you?
Francis, I'm sorry. Francis said that the approaches to the intersection, all four legs, the signage is governed by the county.
Yeah. So can I, can I clarify a little bit? Maybe something, this, this might help. So it sounds like you're talking about two things. You want the movement prohibited as a condition of approval. And then you want the design of the restrictions and signage that prohibit that movement to be reviewed and approved by the township engineer and the township traffic engineer, subject to Mercer County approval.
Well, we were told that.
Two different things.
We could put the signs, and I believe even the applicant said put the signs. I mean, would.
Right. But what, what type of signs and where they go and spacing?
That, that wasn't a county approval thing, that we could put the signs in, that it was a private property, and if they want to make it with signs, they can put signs. So.
If the signs are on the development side, there's no approval necessary, right?
There's a certain distance up the two legs of the development road that will be subject to Mercer County Board jurisdiction as an intersection.
Right. And under the uniform sign provisions, you can, you can't throw the, the signs back behind the area that the county governs. So if you put it back mid-block, it's not going to do anything. So they're both, I mean, I think they're both good ideas. The problem is it's up to the county to approve it.
Well, actually, I think we would want to put these signs way before mid-block, because once a truck turns there, what's he going to do? I would, I would, I would assume we would want to put signs further back and let trucks know that there was no access to go out a certain direction there.
They have to do the signs according to uniform signage standards. And that's not the way it's done. But I agree that, I agree with you in terms of the geometry. You want to make those changes, and you want to make the signage changes. However, they have to be done correctly and legally, and it has to be done with county approval, no matter how much we don't like that.
Okay, well, now I've got a totally different legal opinion than we've had for like the last several meetings. So can somebody clarify?
Andrea, I'm not, I'm not sure Jerry ever said that the county didn't have approval. I don't recall that.
Yeah, I think that was pretty basic to the last couple of meeting discussions. So how, how would we write this up that would, that would now be legal?
Can you please close the door or ask them to go farther?
So, so let me ask this. The, the way it's written now, right, with, before your amendments, what can we add to that? Is there anything we can add to that that would not need county approval? Or Alan, you're suggesting that county approval is needed no matter what signage is put?
I mean, I'm saying is if this is what you want, then put it in, and the county essentially is going to be the final arbiter on this. I mean, that would be the easiest. I like what you're saying.
It's better to have and present it to Mercer County and ask them to approve it.
Exactly.
All right.
And I think just as we should, do the same thing with 571 and have the county approve a no left-hand turn sign for trucks.
Yeah. And that's something we can't do in our conditions. That's something we're going to have to do separately.
Well, that, that's something that I think the council would have to.
Yeah, and that, that's, yeah. And that is something separate and.
Well, we can ask the condition that they apply for a sign to be put on, on that intersection for no left turns for trucks on 571, right? Can ask for it.
The applicant asked for it?
You can make it a condition. We ask them to do a lot, we've, we're asking them to do a lot of other things. Why not add one more?
I think that condition should be added.
We can put it on there, yeah. But we're going to have.
They, they, they ask, they apply, and then Mercer County makes it, it's a county road. Mercer County will decide yes or no.
We can, well.
Better to ask. You can't get turned down if you don't ask.
Okay, we can, we can work on that to several things. So if we put that in here about county approval, should we put something in here saying that we wish the applicant to help supply for it and support it?
Michael, I would, I would think that, I would think that Township Council would have more of an impact on Mercer County in terms of creating that no left turn sign than an applicant.
Yeah, Township Council will, will be working on, on some separate things for that. But if there's some help we can get from the applicant, all for it, that's fine.
Yeah. Well, how, how about the township and the applicant work together to try to get a no left turn for trucks on 571 and work together and figure it out? You can ask and apply and see what happens.
All right, so.
And get it turned down if you don't ask.
So how, are we taking my version of 14 adding? Or are we taking this one? What's, what's going to work most easily? We want to add something to 14 over here, the one I had put together saying that we need, that county, county, that township and applicant will work together towards county approval where needed. Does that work?
No, why don't you make 14A now? That's it. For, for the left turn from 571, make it 14A.
Sure, that makes sense.
What about 14?
No, 14, you, you keep whatever you have with, with county approval, and then you add the language you just spoke, that the applicant and township will work together to get that approval from the county.
Francis, are you okay with Andrea's 14 with the added, with county approval and a 14A that county, that township and applicant will work together to try to apply for no left turn on 571 onto Clarksville for trucks?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Where, okay, I'm totally, I'm, I'm a little confused what's happening with 14. Where's the county?
Using your language, but we need county approval.
So how is that going to say?
I'm sorry?
What are we going to say for that?
Martina?
Well, let's see. Where the company geometry changes as necessary to the intersection Clarksville Road and the master plan road, subject to county approval, to create a physical barrier on both sides of Clarksville.
And can we also ask that the township and the applicant work together to get the county approval for that one, too? Or should we just put both, want both of these, and then just at the end say that township and applicant will work together to get any county approvals that are required? Would that, would that make more sense?
And, and it would be no turns at all on from 571 onto Clarksville, left or right?
We don't want, right. We don't want any trucks turning onto Clarksville from 571, whichever direction they're coming from.
Okay, so township will work with the applicant and the county, right? Township and applicant will work together, applying for no, no turn signs on Princeton Heights Town Road. Right? Got that? Okay, I'll take a motion. I'll take a motion to approve condition number 14 as amended by Andrea's language, our planning board attorney's language, Francis input, and additional 14A language for no turns of Princeton Heights Town Road. I hear motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Simon, the second, second by Annis. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All nays? Any nays? No nays. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Okay, 15, I think we kind of discussed, 15 is no curb cuts should be permitted on Clarksville Road, except where it intersects with the master plan road. I think we discussed this already, where we're going to limit it to one, one exit that lines up with the master plan road, and then one emergency vehicle access. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
It's, yeah, it's one exit on each side.
Yes, one exit on each side, yes. Simon?
I would defer to Chief Lynch of Emergency Services on the number of emergency services curb cuts required for this application.
So that, that's fine. So, so it'd be subject to approval. Well, we're, we're having, we, we state that there has to be at least one emergency service access, but your point is well taken, that Chief Lynch should approve that, that type of cut, that type of access. And if, if one or more is needed. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll take a, I'll take a vote on approving number 15 as.
Yep, so it would be as drafted, and then subject to the recommendation of Chief Lynch, if one or more emergency access points is, are required.
Correct. I'll take, well, and, well, and.
I just want to make sure that whatever is put in here does not allow a regular exit. Is that going to do that?
It has to be at least one, it has to be one, at least one cut.
No, no, it says emergency access only, Andrea. It's not for regular, it's like.
No, for emergen, yeah, I want to make sure it says that.
It's like the chain link fence you have, you have seen in the township.
According to number 15, no curb cut should be permitted on Clarksville Road, except where it intersects with the master plan road. So with the way I understand it, and tell me if I'm wrong, planning board members, there's one curb cut and road going in and out of the development on both sides of Clarksville Road as it lines up with the master plan road. In addition to that one cut, there will be an additional emergency access road, not the six that the applicant had wanted. We're, we're limited to one, and there's, but we feel that there may be need for emergency vehicles. So there, there's going to be an additional access just for emergency vehicles, subject to Chief Lynch's approval. Is that, is that what I understand? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I summed it up unless I missed something.
Mike, that would include the emergency access road as well.
Well, there'd be two. There would be two. Yes, I, I read it, I read it to be two accesses on Clarksville Road into development. One for regular traffic, you know, workers, cars, and hopefully no trucks. And then a second access only for emergency vehicles.
Right.
Is that, Simon, you?
Yeah, I, I would, I, I don't like the idea of limiting it to one emergency access.
Well, that's.
I would say at least, I would say at least one subject to Chief Lynch's, you know.
Yeah, well, we're, we're saying one now, subject to Chief Lynch approval, that one is, he may say one's enough. He may say it's three.
Yeah, okay, good, as long as that's understood.
Martina has documented that language. I'll take a motion to approve number, condition number 15 as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Alan makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Simon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, any nays? Absentions? Vote carries eight to nothing. Okay. We're going to recess for five minutes. We're gonna recess for five minutes. Please take your seats, please take your seats. Thank you. Okay. Please take your seats, quiet down, thank you. Okay. Numbers, number six, we're on condition number 16, which is under traffic access, circulation, and parking. On number 16, the intersection of master plan road and Route 1 shall be constructed as soon as DOT permit is issued. Any, any problems? Any, any planning board member have any issues with that? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is 16, 17, 18, all the way through the end of... Why don't I do it this way? Does any planning board member on the remaining traffic conditions have any, any comments, additions, or amendments?
Okay, I have on 17, 18, 34 amendments, and then I have some additional new conditions which can be done now or later.
So right now, does anybody, anything on 16 or 17?
I have 17.
Anything on 16? Okay. I'll, well, I'll have a motion to approve number 16. Knock that one off.
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Motion by Andrea, second by Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, nays? Any nays? Okay, motion passes eight to zero. Okay, 16 is done. Okay, Andrea, you had some changes to 17.
Um, yeah, I wanted to like clarify and add a little bit to that. 17, I have, shall I read the original, or is everybody okay with that? The original was traffic report shall be prepared by the applicant upon the full occupancy of Phase 1 and for three consecutive years, starting with the first anniversary of the occupancy of Phase 1. I have here, traffic report shall be prepared by the applicant upon the full occupancy of Phase 1 and for three consecutive years, starting with the first anniversary of the occupancy of Phase 1. The traffic report shall include, in addition to standard distances, the full length of Clarksville Road and West Windsor to Princeton Heitstown, Washington Road.
I would change that slightly, Andrea.
Sure.
Because Clarksville Road ends in Cranberry Road, so if you wanna do it the full length, you ought to indicate all the way to Cranberry Road.
Anybody have thoughts on putting it past there? Any ideas? No? I'm fine.
Do you want it all the way to Cranberry Road, or do you want to say Clarksville Road and West Windsor to Princeton Heitstown Road?
And then just up to 571, that's all it says.
Right.
Princeton Heitstown Road to 571, so if we wanna continue it up to Cranberry Road, if that's not a problem with anybody.
It's just the full length of Clarksville Road includes...
Well, Simon is just adding the detail that the full length goes all the way to Cranberry Road.
Alright, alright. Then Cranberry Road, we're calling it, is that where it's called exactly over there?
And that's also a county road.
So why don't we just say full length of Clarksville Road and West Windsor through Heitstown Road to Cranberry Road? Through Princeton Heitstown Road to Cranberry Road?
I mean, if you say full length of Clarksville Road in West Windsor, that includes all the way to the end to the pond.
Okay.
Okay, fine.
Just wanna make sure each, I wanna make sure the intersections are included, not, not just over at the end.
Full length of Clarksville Road in West Windsor? Okay.
Can we, can we make sure to include the intersections, because sometimes that's key to it? Because sometimes they look at some intersections, not others. So I'd like to make sure that the intersection at Princeton Heitstown Road.
I would, I would maybe say in addition to standard, should include, in addition to standard distances, all intersections and through the full length of Clarksville Road and West Windsor.
Okay.
And everybody's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a question, Andrea. Are you changing anything on 18? Or you're proposing?
Oh, yeah.
So in addition to 18, those are part, that would be part of the traffic reports? And is there anything else you want on the traffic reports? Because I'm not sure what the applicant is gonna be doing. Is he going to, I mean, what are you having him study?
We're trying to see what, what kind of, how much traffic is coming through from after Phase 1.
And, and I guess the question I have is, I guess the question I have is, what will happen if you find that traffic is degraded to, to let's say, an LOS of F at each of the intersections? I mean, what are we going to do?
Well, I'm adding under additional conditions that we're gonna be looking at some new traffic plans and stuff, so after, after Phase 1, so that way we will have the information from, from these traffic reports.
Any other comments on number 17?
Okay.
Okay, so I don't hear anything on 17. Let's talk about 18 really quick, and then we can vote on 17, 18 together.
Okay, 18 is new. So what, I'm looking at... Okay, I'm just gonna check and make sure this one works. Okay. 18 is a modification here, which is basically says, prior to the CO for the first warehouse, the applicant will provide a plan to community development as to how they will advise tenants on implementing means and methods of traffic reduction through ride-share shuttles to and from Princeton Junction Station and other transportation opportunities.
So you're proposing to add your 18 language to the existing 18?
Yeah, and I'm looking at that, and this got cut a couple of times. I'm just trying to think, I may remove this, hold on.
Yeah, 18 looks pretty inclusive.
Yeah, I think I, I think I will take 18 out.
You're taking your 18 out? So, okay, so does any other planning board member have any issues with the condition of 18 as written?
All right, I have no, no objection to it. I think it's a good idea. However, you have, we have no teeth to enforce anything in this. I mean, it's a feel-good condition, but, you know, you can't tell the developer that, yes, he's going to have to institute a ride-share program for his employees. You can't mandate that he's gonna have a shuttle to Princeton Junction train station, which may or may not be realistic. You're really, I mean, I have no objection to putting it in, but it's just to me...
I agree with you, but the conditions, as stated, basically says that they should share that information with their employees and such, and hopefully they'll use it. I agree that you can't make someone take a ride-share if they don't want to, or ride a scooter.
And who's gonna provide that information? I mean...
The applicant will provide the information to his tenant.
Okay. The applicant started doing testimony when I asked what they were doing for shared rides and other types of rides, that that's going to be something that they don't wanna do on a macro basis, that they want each of the tenants to take care of that and that they were going to work with the tenants, you know, and have them look at that. So basically, what this is here, and I'm just leaving the way this was written, and then I think basically this is actually what Jerry took down from the conversation. What we're looking at is, okay, if we're gonna go that method, let's go ahead and have the applicant actually report back and show us what they've done. If we wind up in a situation where our traffic reports look, look bad, for instance, we might want to discuss with them further if, how are they, what are they doing with this in order to help the traffic situation? So is it something that we could put numbers on? Actually, I tried that, I was told I couldn't, couldn't enforce them. But basically, it's a knowledge thing. We find out that they haven't done anything, we see that there's a lot of cars, we try to work with them, maybe offer, maybe work with New Jersey Transit, and see what we can do to improve the situation.
So who would work with them?
I would hope our community development people would. I don't know, sometimes that gets to be me too, but the, I would, I would assume that would come out of community development. Mayor? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Who would work, who would work with, who's gonna get these reports, and who, and who is actually going to respond and work with them?
I would think our traffic consultant would get the report.
Okay, so it'll go to the traffic consultant, and then we could decide what programs we might want to do. At that point, it might even come to the council. Is there something we wanna do? Is that basically what we're thinking up here?
The township traffic consultant and township engineer.
Yeah, basically, at that time, I mean, really, the staff, first it would be myself, township engineer, but also working with the township traffic consultant.
Alright, so that's, that's basically, yeah, I mean, I would have loved to have put... All right, so that's, that's basically, yeah, I mean, I would have loved to have put some kind of actual numbers in here. I'm told that that's probably beyond what conditions can do. All right.
Okay. So.
And I just had one more very minor change in the wording. I'm 34, so.
Okay, so, hold on a second. On 18, conditions as written, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, with one modification, Mike, uh, that the information should be provided to the township.
Okay.
Yeah.
Engineer and in consultation with the.
Yes, thank you.
Traffic consultant.
Um, Andrea, is your number 30, you're number 34, right? But, okay, let's do, let's do your, let's jump to 34, and Andrea's comment.
And then I did have, um, um, a bunch of A, B, C, Ds and stuff like that, too. Okay, 34, I just wanted to add at the end of that sentence, um, that it's by West Windsor Police. I think that's assumed, but I just wanted to make it clear.
Uh, anybody have a jux into that? Fine. Okay.
And do you want new conditions when we're done with these? Do you want them at the end of?
Let's just quickly, um, I would just like, um, to knock these off. So let's just have a quick, um, well, and I think we're, 17, we're using, Andrew, 17, we're using your verbiage, 18, you said removing, so we're going to use the conditions as listed.
Well, um, Martina suggested that we added that.
Oh, yeah, plus amendment, that's right.
Right.
Um, okay, so I'll just, and, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve 17 and 18 and 34 as amended.
I have some other questions, not on those, but other.
Okay, let's just knock these 17, 18, 34 out. Entertain a motion to approve 17, 18, 34?
So moved.
Second? Second? Okay, Sue and Simon, well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, nay, any nays? Motion, uh, those 17, 18, and 34, carry eight to nothing. Okay. Andrew, I think your, your additional new conditions apply to traffic, is that correct?
Uh, all except the last one. I have one condition that doesn't.
Okay. So, yeah, additional new conditions, you have an A, a B, a C, and a C2. Those are all traffic?
Hold on a second, maybe.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's, uh, because we're on traffic, let's, let's discuss those.
Thank you. Okay, A would be, um, this is a totally new condition. As part of a submission of a final site plan for Phase Two, applicant will provide a new traffic plan that will eliminate trucks entering or leaving the warehouse site from or to Clarksville Road, with the exception of moving across Clarksville Road at Master Plan Road from one side of the site to the other, in order to continue along that road. The new plan will include both Phase One and Phase Two traffic and a revised traffic study, including potential for trucks and automobiles on the full length of Clarksville Road in West Windsor, and we can change that to full length, uh, full length with all, um, with all.
So you will cross out, just full length of Clarksville Road, right?
Yeah, it includes all, all, all intersections, with all intersections. So basically, I'm asking for, um, a relook at that before we do Phase Two of this entire plan, so that Clarksville Road is not involved with, with trucks coming or going, to the maximum extent possible. Obviously, if we can outlaw on Clarksville Road, that would be the maximum extent. And with the exception of possibly of the trucks passing over Clarksville Road to get from one side to the other.
Andrea?
Yeah.
It's Francis again. Uh, they would obviously need to get on Clarksville from the Master Plan Road to Quaker Bridge, so that movement would also have to be permitted.
Um, well, I'm, I'm looking to see if they can come up with a plan that sort of eliminates Clarksville Road. Is there another exit they could put onto Quaker Bridge Road? I, I would like to see a plan like that, if possible.
So you're, you're opposed to their movement of trucks from Master Plan Road to Quaker Bridge?
I, I would, I would like to see them at least come in with some kind of plan, because Clarksville Road, um, basically having all those trucks come in and out, I think is really harming access from people from in West Windsor, trying to take Clarksville Road down to Quaker Bridge. So if there was some other way this could work, um, I, I, I had assumed the original plan would, would be like that, but it wasn't. So I would like to see some other type of plan on here.
Well, if, if that's what you're proposing, you would be forcing all the trucks to either use Route One or the intersection by Costco.
Or they could.
And, and I don't believe that was part of their study. So I don't, I don't know what the effective level of service is. I don't think that's been.
I think they're going to really move study at this point. I mean, we're making other changes, too. Probably just eliminating some of these curb cuts are going to require a different study. So, um, you know, there might be a way of putting some kind of other exit. There might be a way of improving on Route One, where there's a way they can go in two directions on Route One. Um, I, I'm, I'm looking at this, saying that I think for Phase Two, I'd like to see something better.
Uh, Route One connection is only for outbound. I think the Clarksville Road from the new Master Brown Road to the Quaker Bridge Road should be allowed to make that, that turn, so that can, traffic can go south. Otherwise, Route One is only outbound traffic only.
Well, that's why I'm, I think I would like to see a way that it could go north and south off of Route One. I mean, we'll have time to look at it.
How can you, how can you go southbound on, on Route One?
They would need to have someplace where they could make a turn, or there might be some way that they could go, uh, straight around Quaker Bridge, or there might be some other way that they can.
Once, once they get onto Route One, it's only northbound, it's, you can't go southbound.
From the site right now. I'm, I'm not designing this for them. I'm, but I'm asking them to look at ways that we would not, you know, we could take this whole Clarksville thing out. Excuse me.
I can't, I can't have comments from the public, please, thank you.
Open to discussion on it, but that, but right now, I keep getting told, oh, if I'm telling people they can't turn, as soon as I'm letting these trucks on, on Clarksville making turns, I'm told I can't stop left, I can't stop right. It's, if, if, if that doesn't work, then the only way to do it seems to be keeping off Clarksville. And at one point, Clarksville may be outlawed for trucks. And, and also, from what I understand, um, you know, they were, we were told that Clarksville wasn't even necessarily needed as part of, part of this whole plan. So I'm open to discussion, but I, I don't, I'm, I can't design the plan.
Andrea, you need to clarify, you're not restricting trucks from going to Quaker Bridge on Clarksville?
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah.
Okay, um.
That's just design, I'm.
Please, please share it, everybody. Whatever, whatever Annis is pointing out.
Oh, Annis is saying he wants turns onto, a left turn or whatever, in Clarksville towards, towards Quaker Bridge Road. And I'm saying I'd like to see something where Clarksville wasn't involved, because it seems like Clarksville's a big issue.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make this point. You know, be careful what you wish for. You take trucks away, can't go northbound, southbound on certain places. You're going to push it all onto another place where you don't want it. Okay?
Yeah, all right. Village is a town road, okay.
What I'm saying is this, that that portion of the Clarksville Road from the new Master Brown Road to the, to the, uh, to Quaker Bridge Road should be allowed to, allow that, uh, use that for the trucks, that short portion.
That's, that's how we want the trucks to go. We want to go either on Quaker Bridge Road, or we want to go on Route One.
Yes.
You can't prevent them from turning on that road towards Quaker Bridge Road. I mean, they will either go on, whatever, Avalon Way, or they will go on Clarksville Road out of the development, turning south, going to Quaker Bridge Road, either turn left, go to Sloan Avenue, or turn right, or even turn left and go to 33.
So you can say this, uh, from the, uh, from the new Master Brown Road all the way to the, uh, uh, Clarksville Road to, in the, in the township. But not that portion from the, uh, Master Brown Road to the Quaker Bridge Road. That should be allowed to use the trucks, so that can go south also.
Right.
All right, so you're saying that they go only, and they can only come in that way, too?
Yeah, they can come in that way from Clark.
I don't want them coming in from Clarksville.
From where?
I don't want them coming in from the Princeton Heights Town Road.
Not that.
No, not.
Not Princeton Heights, so that you have, already have conditions put earlier.
No, but they can still come in that way. So how can we design this so they can't come in that way?
I mean, as you said, you can't design it for them, and you can't design it now. I mean, you, if they come for Phase Two, or when they come for Phase Two, you can ask them to do whatever traffic study you want. You don't need a condition for, you, you don't need to put a condition on it.
I would like to ask that now.
If, if you stop it that way, what's going to happen is, the truck comes onto Clarksville Road, and they're all going to start to get backed up on Clarksville Road. They won't be, they won't be able to make turns.
See, what?
I'm not changing that now, I'm, I'm saying I want a design that, that makes that difference.
What, what I suggest is you state what you want happen on during Phase Two, and when they come in for Phase Two with traffic study, then we can do. But this is too weak a condition. I mean, I don't have a problem with B C, B C, C2. This is.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Please, please, no comments.
So, uh, there's no reason for, to prevent their widening Clarksville Road from the warehouse to Quaker Bridge Road. Makes no sense for the trucks not to go from warehouse to Quaker Bridge Road. That's why you want the trucks to go to Quaker Bridge Road.
Okay.
There, they can turn left or right and go wherever they want to go. And that was the whole plan, that 295 is two miles away. That was the whole plan for approving this. Makes no sense to prevent trucks from going to Clarksville Road. I mean, Quaker Bridge Road.
All right, so when we see, basically, when we see Phase Two, I want to make sure that the design is not set up, so that it's very convenient for trucks to come down Clarksville Road to get in there.
That's, that's a fair statement.
So can we say something to that particular thing in, in a provision right now? Because we are, we are approving a preliminary plan, like, as part of this for Phase Two. So there's this whole thing about if we approve a preliminary plan for Phase Two, I don't want somebody spending a lot of money saying, hey, you loved it. Now, now why you, now why are you telling me this isn't good? So I want to make it clear that I want whatever that plan is to not.
Yeah, Andrea, why, you know, we, why don't we have a, we could have a condition that says, you know, when, when the applicant comes in for, for, when the applicant makes the submission for final, uh, for final approval of Phase Two, that the applicant will, working with the municipal engineer and with the township traffic consultant, will review ways in which the traffic plan may, may be modified to, um, to create additional efficiencies. I think without limiting it, it will require them to take a look at this without dictating what they have to do.
So isn't that what they do now? I, I just want something in here saying we don't, we don't want to see that. How do I, how do I do that?
That, that's, I mean, the language you used was, just say the language again, what is the language?
That at Phase Two final approval, the applicant will review with the municipal staff, the engineer and the traffic consultant, the traffic plan, uh, to consider ways in which it may be modified to further reduce traffic on Clarksville Road.
Please, please.
Excuse me.
Andrea, that way, that way the plan, that way you have control through our traffic, our engineer and our traffic engineer.
Okay, but I want it to be obvious before they even come in with a plan that what we're looking for is to avoid the traffic.
That, I mean, if, if it's not obvious to them now, after all this discussion.
I've been talking since the first meeting, saying this wasn't obvious, and asking for, for changes and nothing, I've been having to do it myself.
Right, but. That, that doesn't bind you to approve Phase Two, right? If you, if they come, now you've made it clear to them what you want. If they present a plan in Phase Two that doesn't address this. I mean, her condition says that they need to work with us, not simply come up with a plan.
At least add a sentence to that, saying this plan should address tra- uh, traffic, um, are we calling this south? I forget. Uh, traffic coming from the direction of Princeton Heights Town Road, um, in, into the warehouses. Can we add a sentence like that?
That, that you can add.
Because I want to make sure when they come in with that, that whoever's working on it, whatever company's doing this, uh, understands that's not acceptable.
That's, that's fine, that's not a problem.
So I just have one question, Andrea. Phase Two, I mean, I understand what you're, what you're saying, but doesn't the same apply to Phase One? If it's unacceptable. For Phase Two, why isn't it unacceptable for Phase One?
Because on, on Phase One at this point, there's not as much we can do. The numbers are smaller, the, the warehouses are in a different position, and.
They're basically the same, they're all on the same plane.
Yeah, they're, they're a little close, yeah.
They vary by, you know, a few million square feet, seriously. I mean, they, the same.
Personally, I would, I would have preferred if this happened before, but it didn't, and this is where we are right now, so.
What do you mean, if it happened before?
If this, if, however, this plan was laid down.
We're approving a preliminary.
Right, and I don't want to, when they finish the preliminary plan, I want them to fix both issues. That's what I'm basically saying.
That's not what's been done.
Yeah. At that point, we may not, you know, there may not even be trucks allowed on Clarksville Road, so. You know, so, so this may even be a, a question. But at this, but I do want to make it clear that this would not, that we're not, when we are proving this preliminary for Phase Two, we're not approving, uh, this, this setup. That's basically.
The preliminary for Phase Two is showing, you know, the connections to, to Clarksville Road.
Yeah.
And so what, what are you saying? You're basically going to, um, eliminate the possibility of, you'll allow trucks to come down, um, Clarksville Road to Phase One, but you're not going to allow.
No, 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 I'm, I'm a both effects, since, I wouldn't both look at. When we, when we do this, we'll, it, it's a look pun's a whole thing.
I mean, there are certain rights that are vested when you approve the preliminary.
Right, that's why I'm bringing this up now.
Okay, so Andrea, you okay with, she read with the sentence that you added?
Yes, I want to make it clear that that right is not vested in Phase Two. That's fine.
Okay, so you're okay with Martina's language in how she worded it?
Um, yeah, she added the one sentence there.
I can read it back. As part of a submission of a final site plan for Phase Two, the applicant shall work with the municipal staff, or more specifically, the municipal engineer and traffic consultant to review ways in which the traffic plan may be modified to further limit traffic on Clarksville Road, and the plan should address traffic coming from Princeton Heights Town Road onto the warehouse site.
Okay, Andrea, you're okay with that?
Yeah. So it says address, okay. Yeah, so you're talking about traffic, I mean, to be honest, I want to address trucks.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
So do we need to have specific to trucks in that verbiage?
I would like trucks.
That sentence to.
There's not much I can do about people driving all around the town, I mean.
Yeah, I, I would make it specific trucks and not traffic in general.
So you say tractor trailers.
Right, that what we're considering, what's, what's gonna come in there to that warehouse and drop stuff off? Tractor trailers.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so, and, and, and I, I, since that's part, like, uh, section traffic, that'll be inserted into, um. Right number, it'll be, I guess, where?
Uh, that'll become thirty-five, and then everything else will get renumbered.
Be number thirty-five, and everything else will get moved, okay.
Um, okay.
Okay.
We voting on that?
Yeah, let's just take a quick vote on that, though. Uh, I have a motion to approve, um, the language in Andrew's additional traffic amendment for Phase Two as a, as, uh, noted by town, township, uh, planning board attorney.
Uh, notice is new, it'll be new. Uh, motion to approve?
Okay, Andrew makes a motion to approve, second, second by Annis?
Yes.
Okay, well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, any nays? Okay, motion passes eight to zero to, uh, add, uh, Andrew's additional, um, condition.
Okay, uh, B. Advocate will, upon commencing operation, and on a quarterly basis, review all common truck routing systems for accuracy of allowing entrances, exits, and turns, and will initiate and follow up on any required corrections. So that would be whatever trucks use for Waze and Google and all that kind of thing, they would do a review, and they would, um, correct for any improper, uh, exits and, and direction that those things give.
Any discussion on that item? Okay.
That's Google Maps, or what your truck, truck, uh, G P S systems you use. I mean, Google and others are not always accurate, or, all we want to do is, you want to verify that if any one of them are wrong, you take steps to correct them. Yeah. Yeah, because many times the traffic, uh, routing systems are wrong.
So I have a question as a staff member, what, what are you expecting staff to do or to know that this is in fact happening?
What do you, what do you suggest to, uh, check on compliance, then?
I defer to the board.
Oh, that, then the.
Well, all I can tell you is that you're not allowed to make a left turn on Bentley Drive from Princeton Heights Town Road, yet everybody does it, even though there's a sign there, Google Maps says, go make that left turn, but you're not allowed to. So, and, and that's for the last eighteen years that I know of.
So how do you, how do you change?
You go, for, I've done this actually for streets around here, you go to Google, you tell, you report an error, and they check it out and they change it. I assume everybody else has a system that you can do that with. Um, and that's what I'm looking to have, have done, so that if we have a no left turn for a truck, and a trucker sees that, then, then, uh, they know about it ahead of time, and not when they get there.
So, so, so then, I, I guess if, if township finds that there's inaccuracies in common truck routing systems, i.e. Google, Waze, Maps, whatever it's called, we, uh, work with the town, township professionals, work with the applicant to fix that.
Well, um, I would just ask for something like, maybe since we're asking for this on a quarterly basis, can the applicant just send us a letter saying, hey, we checked, here's the number of errors, and here's what we did? Is, is that reasonable? And it gets sent to engineering?
I mean, I hope once you fix it, then it won't.
Right, it's, uh, well, I, I wish.
It's fine if quarterly they send a letter to Francis saying that we have checked it and found.
Yeah, I, I think after a while, it's gonna be pretty, pretty, uh, correct. Usually it's the beginning that's the problem.
I, I don't, I don't mean to be the cynic, but what I see happening is that they have a, um, they have a boilerplate letter that says, I did not identify any inconsistencies in my traffic study, in my Google Maps, and here, right? I, I suggest that it's on an as identified basis as opposed to quarterly, because I could just see it happening, that there's a standard letter on letterhead, hey, you know, hey, send this out, you know, they, they probably have five years' worth printed, and they could just mail it. So I, I don't, I'm sorry to be cynical, but, um, that's what I see happening. I'll leave it up to my colleagues.
Um, I, I, you know, compliance is, is another whole thing. Um, Mayor, how much time and money can we spend on, uh, making sure this happens?
No, I, I mean, eh, see, I, if they find an error, they need to fix it. I mean, you can, as needed basis is fine, I mean, as, as Mike says that, if they say we checked and everything worked fine, unless you, we ourselves go and check, uh, there's no way to verify they did that or didn't do that.
Is this gonna be another job for me to do?
Or, or, or you can say, uh, when identified applicant will, uh, fix the errors in truck routing system for accuracy.
Okay, well, we have members of the council here, guys, we're all gonna go out in trucks, and we're gonna be checking on this. All right, so you're saying we wanna change this to an as needed basis? Who's going to report it?
That's an identified basis.
As identified by who? Is this?
By whoever, I mean, you, you, you find an error and you tell them.
And, and. We have a lot of concerned citizens here, maybe they will.
Would they, do they ask them to fix it and follow up, or?
No, they, somebody will identify it, someone will report it, we'll ask them to fix it, they'll, they'll go and fix it.
Okay, so we, so when this is identified, we will ask them to fix it.
Yeah.
And they will make sure it's fixed, and they will check on it.
I have a question, which is, Andrew, you said you've done this before with Google, have you?
Yeah, that doesn't mean I'm gonna be doing this for.
No, I, I'm, I'm wondering that if, if you wanted to make such a correction, and you did everything right, but the correction wasn't made, what happens?
You would go back and redo it, and then they, next time, then they correct it. So if it, if it's not corrected, they may disagree with it, whatever, you can at least go back and try to do it again.
I think it's an untenable condition, but, um, I'll leave it up to my colleagues to decide whether you want it or not.
I, I.
Andrew, how, how about this? When an error is identified in truck routing system, the applicant will make every effort to, uh, contact the, uh, I mean, whatever agency to get the error corrected.
So what, what does that mean?
That means Google Waze, I mean, it may not.
Who's reporting the error, and who is reporting it to?
I mean, whenever you find an error, whoever finds an error, or if they find an error, if they tell them, then they need to go to whichever software it was and try to correct them. I mean, beyond that, you can, you can't guarantee.
Um, I'm, I'm open to other opinions here, I, I'm not saying.
Again, I mean, as I, the condition should be such that it's easy to verify whether they did it or not, and be effective. I mean, this is, uh, in a sense, say, you, you, I, I understand what you're trying to do, so you can say as identified, when identified, and whoever, I mean, truck driver was coming to the, them will tell, eh, uh, the routing system didn't work right.
Does that really happens? You, um, I'm, I'm actually curious.
I, I, I'll entertain a motion to approve and, uh, approve Andrew's B, or, and, you know, do I hear any motion to approve Andrew's, uh, letter B?
I'm gonna move, uh, move it.
Andrew's additional comments, let it be. Advocate will, upon commencing operation, on a quarterly basis, review all common truck routing accuracy, and allow truck entrances and turns, and will initiate and follow up on any required corrections. I'll entertain a motion to approve that condition.
I'm gonna move it.
Okay, Andrew, uh, moves the motion, do I hear a second?
I mean, I'll second, I see, I share your cynicism, but.
Okay, the mayor seconds it. I'm gonna, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I heard, and, um.
No.
The mayor was an aye, and.
I'm an aye.
And Curtis is an aye, and Andrew's an aye. Uh, well, any nays?
I'm a no.
Okay, Alan's a no. Simon? No.
Aye, no.
No for Annis, Susan, no.
So, done, you don't have to vote.
Chairman is, is a no, so motion fails.
Well, I thought that was a real simple one, but I guess I can be wrong, all right? Um, okay, C. Signs will be posted in prominent places stating New Jersey State anti, anti-idling regulations, and anti-idling regulations shall be enforced.
This seems pretty reasonable. I'll entertain a motion to approve that one. Okay, move by Curtis.
Second.
Second by Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
What's this? Any nays?
Which is C?
One idling.
Is that?
Who's gonna enforce that?
It's, there's a law about idling.
If an officer goes by and sees a truck idling, and times it, they'll get a ticket.
And, and, and we would hope that the, if they see people idling, trucks idling, they'll say, remember.
No, I was just asking. Okay, Simon, are you, uh, yea?
Yeah, I'm a yea.
Okay, so motion passes eight to zero to include, uh, Andrew's, um, additional condition C.
Okay, C Two? Um, I wanna.
Mr. Chair, that, that one, I believe, is fifty-eight on the list?
Um, fifty-eight was slightly different, I think.
Okay, yeah, it, it is, it's addressing fifty-eight. The only language that's not there is enforcement.
All right, so you want, that's under signage?
Well, it's a sign. So.
Well, that just says there's gonna be a sign, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, but township staff will approve the location and, um, the messaging of the anti-idling regulation sign. There'll be anti-idling regulation signs. Number fifty-eight.
You know what, I'll, let me put C Two, and it might include stuff, okay, which I wanna thank the Sierra Club, by the way, for the wording on this one. Bridge Point agrees to the employment of best practices for reducing diesel emissions on-site in the site surroundings, and to require the same in its tenant leases. This includes no idling and the use of particulate filters, which also require best practices in truck maintenance and operation.
Take some comments from the members of the board.
I, I like the idea, but who's going to be reviewing the leases? The tenant leases? To ensure that that's done, and who's gonna enforce this if it's not done?
I, I don't know about enforcement, I like the idea of having it, uh, the language in, in the tenant leases, I have no problem with that.
Oh, I have no problem, but do we review those leases? Who's gonna review?
That doesn't, I don't.
I'm not.
Does it need to be like a hundred percent of the leases reviewed, or is this something where every so often we have the, we can ask to see it, and if it's not there? I mean, I, I assume there's some good faith of some form on the, on the type of, where people don't look to get away with absolutely everything? If we ask for.
I'm just asking the question, I think it's a simple question, and I think that, you know, if you're gonna be putting it in, you wanna see the leases, somebody should be.
Who, who reviews leases now? If, uh, uh, do we, nobody in township reviews leases, right? Okay, so it's gonna be the same for this? Right?
So what's the point?
I mean, it's, it, it, it's, it should be in the lease, and maybe the tenant will follow the rules. If it's, like I said, you can't be turned down if it's not there.
I, I assume they have a boilerplate lease, and I would hope they would put this in it, so.
Okay.
I assume we have the right to ask to see a boilerplate lease at some point to, to check.
It, it's, it's, my, my cynicism is it's not enforceable, won't be enforceable, but it would be nice to have in the lease.
Okay, I, I go along with you on that.
I get a lot of nods from my fellows, uh, cynical, plenty of members.
This is an awfully cynical group.
I'll, I'll entertain him, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, include Andrew's C Two as a condition.
So move.
Uh, move by Alan, second.
Second.
Second by the mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And can I go back to C, which, oh, sorry?
Any nays? Extentions? Okay, move, um, and, uh, C Two in.
No, and C, we do mention that we're gonna enforce anti-idling regulations, is that, is that something that we don't wanna actually state?
We will enforce it if, just like if someone runs a red light, it, does, does, does the person break the law if no one's there to see the running of the red light?
All right, so, but we, and we'll, so we'll use fifty-eight for the signs and stuff like that? And then it will be enforced by, by police, or by, um, me with a stopwatch or something? All right.
I mean, it, I mean, if, if you see a lot of trucks idling there, it may be a good moneymaker for the township to post some, uh, police there and just get tickets out. Eventually, the, the, it'll stop.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how it works.
Yeah, I, I would hope so, because I don't wanna see those trucks idling. Um, I think that's it, I have one other at the end, four other at the end.
Okay, we're gonna wait on that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving right along, okay. So we were, so that's, that was the end of, um, traffic.
Well, for Andrew, I have some questions.
You have some additions, Alan?
Yeah. Condition twenty-one. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Condition twenty-one. We're basically saying that the applicant shall continue the trail connection toward Bear Brook Road. I think you should change that to the applicant shall instruct the trail connection, it's just too vague as to what continue means.
Okay.
And number twenty, well, is that okay with everybody?
I'm, I'm fine with that, so we're, just so you know that, um, so we're, we're still in the traffic section, we're, it's nineteen.
Number twenty-one.
Twenty, and your comment was on twenty-one.
Correct.
Before we continue on, does anybody have anything on, because some of these are, you know, as written was accepted by the applicant already, so there's no reason to, kinda, unless someone has any comment to change. So nineteen should be okay, unless any.
I have, I have a comment on nineteen.
Sure, go ahead, Sue.
The last line, trailer parking spaces shall be restricted to storage of disconnected, I'd like to add licensed trailers only in good working order.
Right.
We don't want them sitting there, they might work, but they just sit there and sit there and sit there, because they're not using them, they're not licensed. I'd like to see them licensed.
I'm fine with that, uh, anybody else have any issues with that? Okay, Martina, you have that? Okay, number twenty, anybody have any comments on number twenty? Okay, twenty seems okay, well, we'll, we're gonna vote on all these as a group after any amendments. Alan, I have your amendment on number twenty-one.
Uh, yeah, we have the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, number twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
The developer's agreement shall include language untimely appear by the, repaired by the applicant of deterioration of local roads attributed to construction traffic. I would be more comfortable if we set actual limits of, uh, the roads that would be in question, and then I guess, normally, when you, when you do construction, you're basically T V'ing either a sewer line, or, um, the, the actual road conditions, and inspect them prior to the construction. In this case, I'm not sure what roads would be in question, I'm not sure the length of the areas that you could, uh, say that the developer would be responsible for, that the developer would be responsible for repair, and I'm not really sure, um, as to how you're going to prove that this construction vehicles are the ones that are causing the deterioration, let's say, at Clarksville Road. So I'm not sure, you know, whether that can be spelled out now in some form, Francis is most familiar with this.
Is that going in the agreement?
Well, I know that the agreement, but I feel uncomfortable, because I don't know what's in that agreement.
But you, you can make it as part, uh, you can make it a condition, but you could make it that as part of the pre-construction meeting with township staff, they provide from their contractors the proposed construction routes for review and approval, along with , uh, video. for review and approval along with video documentation of the condition of those roads prior to construction.
Okay, then do you ever run into a problem when the developer says, well, that's, I didn't close that pothole?
Usually, if, as long as you have the video ahead of time, sometimes it is questionable, but obviously, they, they want cooperative township staff for timely processing of permit reviews and submissions.
Okay, so I think what Francis is suggesting, we could put that in at this point with the developer's agreement as well.
So I got that. So as, as part of a pre-construction meeting with the municipal staff, the applicant shall provide the construction routes, including video documentation of the conditions of the road?
Yes.
Okay, any...
And that's instead of the proposed twenty-five, is it?
Yes. That's in, what Martine just, that's in place of number twenty-five. Okay, Alan, any other comments?
Nothing else on that.
Through the rest of traffic. Anybody else have any issues on numbers nineteen, well, nineteen through thirty-four. We already voted on thirty-four through thirty-three.
Can I ask for clarification on number thirty?
Sure.
Are we discussing the shared path along Quaker Bridge Road? That's my impression, but it doesn't specifically state it.
Yeah, I think that's on Quaker Bridge Road, yes.
Okay, it would be helpful if we identified.
We need to add that.
Yes, please.
What you're saying is proposed Quaker Bridge Road shared path?
Or the proposed shared path along Quaker Bridge Road.
Okay. You got that, Martina?
Yep.
Everybody's okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other changes? So I'll just, um... So I'll entertain a motion to approve under section Traffic numbers, conditions nineteen through thirty-three as amended. So moved. And it's made the motion?
Second.
Second by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Chairman votes aye, passes eight to zero. Okay. Okay, next up is noise section. Okay, so thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, there's some changes that were requested by the applicant, but we all have our versions. Any mods or changes to those? And I'll, I'll ask if there's anything on any of the noise conditions.
Well, I just have a comment generally on these. First of all, I think if we had confidence in the applicant's noise studies, we wouldn't be asking for six conditions regarding post-construction noise studies. It had that there are no studies as to the impact of noise generated by trucks going both up and down the grades, particularly at the railroad, at the crossing of the railroad. There's no studies regarding the braking, jay braking, shifting of gears. This should have been presented during the hearings. They weren't. Another factor to consider is that the township had no certified noise consultant evaluating the applicant's noise study. I know something about noise, and certainly some of our consultants do as well, but nobody really, they're not certified noise experts, and I think that is a big failing in this. I believe that... And it's far easier to fix a problem before it's constructed rather than try to remediate it afterwards. That's all I had to say. I had to say it because...
Okay. You're, you're a member of the planning board. You're entitled to get your comments heard. Any other comments on thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven? Okay. If I remember correctly, I believe that a noise study would have to be conducted, you know, to your point, Alan, a noise study would have to be conducted before they issued their CO to make sure that, or after, after phase one. Can I remember the exact language?
Right, and I understand that, Mike, but I do think that we need somebody qualified to review that. I'm not saying our staff aren't qualified, but they're not experts in it. And again, it's far easier to do something preemptively than to try to remediate.
So I could propose a condition because we've seen this in other contexts, and the way that it's handled, it's very difficult to assess if a model, an acoustical model, is accurate. The only way to know is to test it once the construction is made and to ensure that the sound is complied. So what I would propose, the condition could be, is that the township selects its own acoustical specialist or engineer to conduct the testing, or the township health department can do that testing to determine that the sound levels are complied with.
I would agree with you, Martina, the fact of getting an actual noise consultant. I'm not sure what the qualifications are of the health department is. Certainly, they can read a decibel meter, but do they have the right practice? But there's a whole practice in terms of doing noise readings. It's not that you just go out to a site for a minute, take a reading, and then that's it. There's a whole practice behind doing this. So I do think that a traffic consult, I'm sorry, sound consultant would be necessary.
Okay. If we're putting something in here, can we add something about getting a base noise before all this construction?
I'm not sure if that was part of their sound study to begin with.
Yeah, because some, I mean, we had a very simple application here a couple of weeks ago, and they had a excellent base study before any of the changes were made, and so I'd want to make sure that was done before all this happened.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? If you have a base study and it's very, very, very low because there's nothing there, and they construct and the noise level is below the acceptable amount, does it matter whether it was very low to start, medium to start, as long as after everything's done, it's still below the threshold?
It doesn't matter then, but they can also make a claim that they, they're only being judged on what they contribute.
Yeah, but if they can, but still, if they contribute, and again, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, if they contribute X and it's still below the threshold for acceptable noise, what are you gonna do?
Then it's fine. Then there's nothing you can do. But if it's above, for instance, there's a train that goes past. They can't be responsible, I believe legally, for the sound of the train plus the sound of...
Granted, if the, if the, if the test is conducted at the same time the Amtrak train is going by, then sure, it's gonna be above.
What I'm trying to say is that, that if there's a, they can always say there's a high background noise, and that's why they fail. If they pass, it doesn't matter.
Well, it doesn't matter. If they fail and there's a high background noise, then there's remediation that's required.
They can...
Yeah, I mean, that was my, that was my understanding too, that if the noise test fails, then it doesn't matter why it failed, they need to, they need to fix it.
Can I get a legal opinion on that? Because I understand that if the noise is there and they're only contributing a certain amount, we, they can't be blamed for the last decibel. You know, if it's forty-nine decibels a night and they, and they have one decibel of noise and it goes up to fifty, it doesn't work that way.
Well, the sound isn't cumulative, where if there's forty-nine in the background and they're making one on-site, it doesn't straight add to fifty. They would have to generate forty-nine plus the one themselves.
So what you're saying, it's not cumulative, they're going to say that they're not responsible for the background noise?
It's whatever the reading on the meter is at the time it's taken. If it's out of compliance, it's out of compliance.
So if their, if their meter reads fifty-one, it doesn't matter what else is going on at the time, they still fail?
Any, any qualified consultant would know if a train were to occur during the readings, what part of the time that that train affected the noise levels?
But if it's not a train and it's HVA systems and all that kind of stuff?
That would be their HVA system, so it should be counted.
Well, let's say it's somebody else's HVA system.
But there's nobody around there.
In phase two, like they're near some apartments. They're not, that's really, the really only problem here, I think, is phase two where the small warehouse is there, and they're not too far from the apartments over in Clarksville, so there's a certain...
That's not the only thing that's gonna occur in phase two. Phase one, you're gonna have truck traffic going past, past those development, past the, what, what's the name of them?
I don't think the road truck traffic is what is included in this. Am I correct? It's not?
Well, when you have a truck jay braking going down a grade, yeah, that makes a significant impact in terms of noise.
But if the trucks...
Shifting of gears do the same thing.
Right, but if the truck isn't on the warehouse property?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're talking about a truck on the warehouse property.
I'm talking about on warehouse property, and I think the other should be considered.
Okay, but most, most of these warehouses aren't near, how, the phase one ones aren't that close to the house.
But phase one will have the truck traffic going down those hills and going up the hills.
Are you talking about on the other side of the warehouse near Master Plan Road?
No, I'm talking about Clarksville Road. You have a grade going up over the river. And you have two developments that are very close to that.
Okay.
Will be in fact... I would leave it to the traffic expert to basically define what he is looking at and for. Yes, we really, and as I said, I'm not a, I'm not a sound expert, and I think that's what we need. We should have had one to begin with.
I'm a little confused. If a truck goes from the warehouse on Clarksville Road, is that part of the sound? Of this project legally? How would you even know where the truck came from? I mean, that's, come, Martina? Are there, if a truck leaves the warehouse?
Hi, Chris Jefferson, environmental consultant. Andrea, if the, if the level's above sixty-five during the day, they fail. If it's above fifty at night, they fail at the property line, regardless of what else.
But it's, but does that include trucks that have left the property and that are on the road?
If they're out on Route one above, past the property line, no. You're taking these readings at the property line.
Okay, so...
Right, as Chris says, you're taking the reading at the property line, right? Whatever, if, if there's a truck right outside the property line and it's braking, it's gonna be included in, in, in the reading. But if it's, it's down Route one near New Brunswick, it's not included in the reading. Right.
So, okay.
So what I'm suggesting in all of this is, I think this discussion has really brought out the fact that we really don't know that much about sound, and number two, we really need a sound expert to take these readings.
Okay, so, so if I remember correctly, I think after the building comes in for final appro, I, I believe there was gonna be a sound check, so at that time, we, the township should hire its own noise professional. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody?
That's my suggestion.
No?
That's not what I just heard?
Yeah, I mean, we can hire our own professional to do the, do the study. As Chris said, if it's above that level, they fail. Doesn't matter what the background noise was or anything else, they need to fix that.
Okay, so any further comments on that? The township will add language in that the township will have its own noise professionals, as Alan suggested, to ensure that they're complying with the sound levels, and we'll have a professional noise consultant. So are we adding that to number thirty-five? It would, it would be at what point?
I think before they start to get CO, right?
Before they get, before they get, okay, please.
As a part of CO, I mean, if they don't think that, yeah.
And then I believe we wanted that, we were gonna do a study after occupancy of a tenant to make sure that they're still in compliance.
Right.
Did I remember correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so then we'll have that language added in. Well, so basically, that's creating a base, a base level because it's before occupancy. Okay, so Martina, you have that language noted. It's basically thirty-five plus a base case noise level study using a township hired noise professional, and then, and before CO is issued, there would be another study done to ensure that, well, that they're still in compliance. Okay. I, I, I don't really want comments for the, from the public, but if you don't pay for the study, guess what happens? We just approved the noise, so the applicant will be paying for the study. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve thirty-five with amended language to hire a noise professional.
I would just suggest that the applicant pay for that.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, the applicant will pay for the profession. I'll entertain a motion to approve thirty-five with amended language regarding noise professional to do studies before and after.
So moved.
Please, I'm sorry, Simon?
Yeah.
And Simon made the motion. Do I hear a second? Mayor's second. All, all, um, denote by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes eight to zero. Okay, thirty-six. So it's basically the same thing but for phase two? Is that what I'm understanding it to be?
Right.
So, so do I hear any changes? So if we just applied all the, all the same language from thirty-five into thirty-six, with the phase two in there? Is that acceptable to planning board members?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve thirty-six?
So you said with, with sort of to mirror thirty-five?
Same language except for phase two.
So moved.
Okay, so mayor is gonna move to that motion.
Second.
Second by Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, I think this is kind of the last one that is comments from the applicant. Okay, so number thirty-seven, post-construction noise study of phase two should be evaluated for state, for state and township compliance. It will be subject to review, and it seems like it's the same. It's all kind of connected to thirty-five and thirty-six. But it's, it's, so it's...
I agree. Since we're changing thirty-six to mirror thirty-five, I think we can get rid of thirty-seven.
I think so. Is everybody... Is everybody okay with that? Get rid of 37 because 36 mirrors 35. Okay, we're going to eliminate, I'll entertain a motion to eliminate condition number 37 as it's a duplicative to 35, 36.
So moved.
Move by Alan, second by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any extensions? No, motion passes to eliminate number 37. Okay, moving right on. 38, 39, 40. All these conditions were agreed upon by the applicant. Do we need, is there any discussion, amendment, or changes on those items? See a none, I'll entertain a motion to approve 38, 39, and 40 as written.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion by Simon, second by Alan, is that right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Extensions? Motion, condition 38, 39, 40, pass eight to zero. Moving on right along, very quickly, to landscape and conservation. Starting with number 41. The only, okay, 41 through 52, these conditions have no amendments by the applicant. So the only thing I'll say on 47, I believe that should be 100 feet instead of 75 feet. That's right. Does any, any member of the planning board have any amendments to 41 through 52? Under landscape and conservation? Can you speak up?
Question on 52?
I'm sorry. Sue, go ahead.
Well, that's somebody down there.
Alan and...
All right. 52.
52.
The applicant shall provide a schedule from the property owner for removal of rubble that will not be used during the project in the existing crushed construction that will be reused. I'd like to see something in there as far as the testing of those materials. If they're going to be reused for streets or pavement or whatever, we want to make sure that that's not contaminated rubble.
That makes sense. During construction, isn't, aren't there testing soil samples, testing done on the site? I'll ask our township professionals. Isn't that normal procedures on something like this or...?
Not typically for construction because they would have normally tested it during purchase before acquisition or they would already know. As you've heard from the testimony, there's only one small area of concern, it's already under a deed restriction, so the rest of the site is presumed clean unless otherwise found, so.
Okay, so then...
But I'm not talking about the soils. I'm talking about the rubble, the concrete.
Concrete rubble materials, okay.
The concrete, you know, that's been removed maybe from interior, some of those buildings.
I understand what you're talking about. Normally, that's not tested for contamination if it's generated from the site and used on the same site. It's typically not tested.
Normally, those concrete removals not being used for concrete anymore.
Right.
That's their practice, they don't use.
Yeah, but these buildings are very old.
Even if it's going to be reused, they don't test it.
They don't use it.
Not normally, and especially in something like a roadbed because all the petroleum solvents that are in the asphalt itself is, is subject to causing contamination in and of itself. You wouldn't be able to use, you know, ground asphalt for, for anything else besides road. So the same thing with, with the concrete, if the crushed concrete's being used for a roadbed, that's permissible because it...
Every material that you use has an ASDM standard, okay? So they have to follow the ASDM standard for those materials.
Right, but the ASDM doesn't cover contamination issues. ASDM would be more for the mechanics of the material, performance.
How are we assured that that material's not being used under the base of the building?
It could be used under the base of the building.
But then if it is contaminated, you're putting contaminated concrete under a building? If they're reusing what they've torn up, correct?
That's what the, that's what appears, yes, that they're stockpiling the material from the site.
So you don't feel that there's any problem with that?
Oh, I didn't say I didn't feel there wasn't a problem with it. I'm just telling you what the practice is, that there's not normally a requirement, there's not, there's not a township code that requires it and there's not a building code requirement for testing for contamination of subsoil structural fill like that. If you want to make it a condition, that would be the board's prerogative, but there's not normally anything outside of that.
Well, here's my concern, Francis, with that, is that this facility, as American Cyanobid, was an agricultural research facility. And so I'm wondering about, you know, when there is soil disturbance, you know, and items are unearthed and exposed to the, you know, the elements, you know, what's, what safety precautions there are?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just normal earthwork, so unless there's an obvious problem during the earthwork, if there's a smell or a color or a sheen on the water, then, then everything's presumed to be within, within limits. So that, again, it would just be whatever testing the property owner would have done prior to or subsequent purchase of the property and disclosed in a Phase One study.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the rubble piles are the retail portion?
Yeah.
Hold it close, Chris. Hello? Okay. I just want to clarify. So the way that this is written, we're going to provide a schedule from the property owner because the property owner, Atlantic, is the one that has done the demolition. All of the materials are on the retail portion, which is going to be owned and operated and developed by Atlantic. They have the pile there, they have an LSRP involved with the work that they're doing there. So this was sort of structured as a reporting requirement because it's on their section. You'll see that application eventually, and they're doing a cleanup advise in compliance with, you know, regulatory environmental laws and have an LSRP involved.
So, so just to follow up on that, none, none of the materials from the building deconstruction, for lack of a better term, is going to be used in the construction of the warehouses or underneath the warehouses in the, in the development of this Phase One? Is that accurate statement?
Yeah, it's not anticipated that we would be using any of the rubble that is on their site. It's also my understanding that whatever's being used is clean.
Okay. Sue, any follow up to that? They're claiming that anything being used underneath the warehouse or on the development of Phase One is clean and all the rubble is now moved, has been moved to the retail portion of the site for, eventually Atlantic comes before the board, we can always make that a condition that, that the rubble is tested for contaminants, you know? I'm just kind of summarizing.
So we don't want to say the applicant shall provide a schedule from the property owner or provide a certification from the property owner? That that rubble is clean? That's up to the board.
I mean, if that's what you want and you're proposing it and your fellow members agree, then the applicant will have to provide a, you know, testing schedule that everything...
Well, the property owner.
On the property owner.
Property owner.
Yes.
I would agree with Sue on that point, but also I'm a little concerned as to how long we're going to be seeing that huge pile of dirt and rubble out on Quaker Ridge Road, even though it might be on the site of proposed commercial development? That could be how long? I think it's important that a quick timeframe is developed so that it's removed from the site. Or put someplace where it's not seen.
This, this condition 52 shall provide a schedule for the removal of the rubble. That would answer Alan's question.
Well, it does answer my question, but it doesn't because I don't know what that timeframe is going to be. Is it going to be agreed to, this could be two years from now?
And it also doesn't, this applicant is claiming they don't control the rubble pile.
So how can we change this?
You just want to add a condition that they will certify the material they're using is clean or whatever the word is?
That's my original thought, but then we add in Alan's concern too about...
If I may make a recommendation or a suggestion, this language addresses the schedule, right? Because we can get the schedule and provide that. And then to the extent that we would take any of the existing crushed construction materials over to our site as a catch-all, just to be clear, that we would provide evidence that it's clean. So, you know, we're here on the warehouse application and that development, and to the extent we're pulling any of those materials or using them on the warehouse site, we'll provide evidence that it's clean materials.
But when are you going to get rid of those piles?
We have no control over because it's not on the warehouse. We're not developing that site.
But some of the, some of the debris comes from the warehouse site.
Atlantic cleared the site, moved it over.
Exactly.
Yeah, Alan, the township will go after Atlantic and ask them to move it because it's, it's not which point is, it's the Atlantic responsible for...
Atlantic has a representative here tonight.
I didn't hear him.
Atlantic has a representative here?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's why I'm pointing out to him, that they will have to, that was going to be my question, if they don't, they'll live for two years, if that's going to stay there for two years. So we will, the township will approach Atlantic and ask them to remove it.
Okay, do we need that as a, we don't need that as a condition, you're going to just do it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Sue, to address your issue, and Alan to address your issue, but Alan, your issue, the mayor will talk to representative from Atlantic to get the rubble piles removed to reduce, okay?
And if they say no?
What?
If they say no, what recourse do we have?
Well...
Alan, you can put condition on them that they don't control. I mean, the Atlantic representative sitting there, and we will talk to them and ask them to remove it. And we can add a additional condition for Sue's thing that they will certify that anything that's used, reused in the construction of warehouse is clean.
Thank you.
Okay, so Martina, you have that line? I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Board members, you're, you're okay with, with the language that we amend 52 to include that the applicant tests any material being used, that it's clean and not contaminated? Makes sense, right?
Yes.
Okay, Martina, you have that language?
Yeah.
Okay. And Alan, I think we can't hold this applicant hostage to something they don't control on adjoining property.
Well, I mean, the point is, they did move a lot of the construction debris from the sites with the warehouses to the present location on Quaker Ridge Road.
The mayor will work with Atlantic to reduce that. We can always ask the applicant to purchase all the rubble from Atlantic, make sure it's clean, and then reduce the piles to zero, right? But that may not, that might not be viable. Okay, so I'll entertain, so before I entertain a motion on 52, are there any in, okay, landscape and... Oh. Stenographer, do you need extra time or something? Okay. Got it, okay, sorry. I wish I was only here to 10 also. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Landscape and conservation, other than the change on 47 for 100 feet, and we made some amendments to the language in number 52. Any other amendments to 41 through 52 under landscape?
I have a comment on 43.
Okay, sure, Alan.
Okay, so, yeah, I have no problem with the air quality statement being included for the record. The problem I do have is that the air quality report neglects an important part of air quality, which is the particulate pollution that's generated from diesel trucks. There's been no study of that made, and I think that's a flaw. I just said that, I think it's a flaw in this application, that that was not considered made part of the air quality report. And I think actually one of the high school kids brought that up here. So that's my only comment, I think it's good to put it in the record.
So, sorry that that's, so that that statement shall include particular, what was the language?
Well, they'd have to basically come up with a whole new report then, doing a study of the particulate matter that could be found through the generation of diesel trucks that would be coming onto the site. I don't know if they're interested in doing that at this point. But that's not what I was suggesting, I was just suggesting that the air quality report is flawed.
Are you suggesting they do an air quality report prior and then after? And get into the record?
Well, if you want it, if we do it after, I guess we'd have to have baseline as to what the...
You need one before and then you need one after.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the only reports they did on things like particulate matter and, I forget the other chemical that comes off the diesel, were things that were miles away and stations that measured that. They didn't do any localized report on that.
What are you suggesting?
So I think what you suggested was a good idea, Mike.
Okay, so we're looking to amend, to amend number 43 to include for the record an air quality study before and after.
And the study would include particulate?
And the study would include, I'm not familiar with that.
Particulate.
Particulate matter. Okay.
Solids.
So, okay.
Particular matters, the proper word. Yeah, before and after what, though? Before and after what?
Construction of the Phase One.
Construction. And I would think you'd want to capture the operation of the facility, right?
Yeah. And after occupancy.
So you have baseline and then what?
Baseline, after construction and occupancy. Okay, any other amendments? Any other amendments to under landscape from 41 through 52?
What's number 47?
Yes, it's 100 feet. Anybody? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve conditions 41 through 52 as discussed and amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, moved by Simon.
Second.
Second by the mayor. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, chairman is aye also, so motion to approve 41 through 52 passes eight to zero. Okay. Building architecture, there are one, two, three conditions, all agreed upon by the applicant. Any, any amendments, changes to those three? 53, 54, 55? Okay, approval, move to... Okay, approval, moved to approve by Curtis, second by Andrea, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, any nays? Motion carries eight, eight to zero on Conditions 53, 54, 55. Signage, there are three conditions, 56, 57, 58, all agreed upon by the applicant, no changes. Any amendments by any of the planning board members or discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve signage 56, 57, 58 conditions.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second by?
Second.
Second by the mayor, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Sensations? Motion signage 56, 57, 58 passes eight to zero. Stormwater management, sec, uh, Conditions number 59, 60, 61, and 62. All, all conditions were accepted by the applicant. Do I hear any amendments?
One top logo with that red line on their website. The former number 59, that NJ PAC.
It's in the conditions. It's, it's in the condition.
It's in the condition. Says the emergency rules that DEP tends to adopt, rooms PAC shall apply to the application. If the rules are adopted, the rules would apply at the DEP level.
Doesn't matter.
We're going by one.
We're going by this.
Okay, I, I don't really want to just comment for the public, but I, I will say that we're going by the conditions as outlined by our attorney, planning board attorney, and taking over the course of the five meetings, four meetings plus this. And this is the version we do. When we look at and we approve or we disapprove. We, we don't go by what the applicant would like, we go by what we would like. In some cases, the applicant agrees with us, in some cases, they don't. In this case, we're on stormwater management, number 59, 60, 61, and 62. There are four conditions under stormwater management. It does not look like I have any applicant changes or amendments. I know it's dropped off the red line, but do I hear any changes to our version of conditions?
Is it 62 or is it just the 61, because 62 is utilities?
I have 59, 60, 61, 62, under stormwater management. It's not the red line version. I'm looking at our version, West Winter version.
This is the one off the website.
Sorry about that. Not a problem, stormwater management, 59, 60, 61, 62. I'm up to 16 conditions under this, uh, now, because I repeated it four times.
All right.
Okay, it's still the same, 59, 60, 61, 62. All right, any amendments, conditions, changes?
62. I'm really concerned the way it's written.
Okay.
It says that a stormwater BMP maintenance plan has been prepared and found by the township engineer to be missing some key elements. And the applicant shall de, de, address the deficiencies in a manner acceptable to the township engineer during resolution compliance.
Okay.
My problem is, I don't really understand what those flaws are, what, what those things are. But apparently they're, they're very important. I think that should have been brought out to begin with. And it should not have been approved without having those conditions addressed. We have no idea what, whether they actually can meet the requirements, whether there will be modifications having to be made to either the buildings or to the basements.
Okay.
Maybe Francis can.
Francis is waving his hand, I think he has an answer.
So Alan, the, the subject of this condition is the BMP Operation and Maintenance Manual that gets developed for the property owner and the tenants to know what's on site and how to maintain it when it comes to stormwater. Typically, this is developed after all the designs are done and approved, and the majority of the permits are issued so that the applicant has a finalized stormwater management program developed for the property. In developing the maintenance plan, the DEP has a boilerplate posted on its website, which runs the full gamut of how these are to be put together. So anytime in the reports that my office does that cites deficiencies, we're comparing it to the template that DEP has put together. So there are some items in the template that have not been addressed in their current version. So those are the deficiencies that are cited. So we will work with the applicant to get those missing blanks filled in in the overall manual before it's approved by my office.
So you believe then that they can address these deficiencies?
Yes, it's not how things were designed, it's just the documentation that tells maybe not so knowledgeable person on what they have on their property, what it's supposed to do, and how to maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that, is that okay with you, Alan?
Yep.
Now, the, just to follow up Francis, so the, the application won't go forward or then move towards construction without this being addressed, correct?
Yes, it'll be a resolution compliance issue, and the plans won't be approved until it's done.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, I'll, any, any other changes to stormwater management, 59, 60, 61, 62 conditions? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Okay, approved by Simon, motion by Simon, second by Annis, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any nays, abstains? No, motion passes eight to zero. Stormwater management. On utilities, this number's Condition 63 through 70, through 71. I see no comments by the applicant. Does the planning board have any amendments, comments, changes that you'd like to address?
Number 63.
Yep.
I'm concerned about the fact that no stable accessway to this portion of the system of the, of the proposed extension of the sewer lines has been shown. I'm just worried that we're not going to have access because of either wetlands or flood hazard permitting, which won't permit that. Okay.
The condition is asking for one, though.
I know, but is, can we be guaranteed that, that will occur? That's my, that's my question.
But it's, but I, I don't know. I'll leave it up to Francis.
Yeah, so it's, it's requested as the condition indicates, it's subject to DEP permitting. I can tell you that there are portions of the existing system throughout the town that are unfortunately in locations that have constrained access, where certain times of the years, you can't get to it because it's, it's close to a flood plain or bordering a wetlands, and the soils just don't support getting a truck out to allow access to it.
So are you saying then that that might still be the case with this?
It's a, it's a potential, depending on how the permitting goes. It's not expected to be a problem, but it is a potential that DEP, for whatever reason, has issue with it.
So they're, so they're gonna, they're gonna, it requires DEP approval. And so if, if a stable accessway is not in an area where DEP approves, then won't it have to be moved?
The access, well, the accessway would follow the sewer line in the perfect world, because you want, you want to get to the manholes that are in there, so you can access the lines underneath. So because sanitary sewer is most efficiently, it cost-effectively designed to follow the natural low areas of the land. They typically order streams, wetlands, and flood plains. And that's, that's how the majority of the sewer in the township was developed. And from there, it branches off into the more developed areas. So unfortunately, you do wind up in areas that may at times be inaccessible due to weather conditions or soil conditions, so.
So if there are significant portions of that sewer that are inaccessible, and there is a problem, what do you do?
I wouldn't deem that it's, that it's significant portions. I think there's a few, a few portions of their design do wind up having that. It's just a matter of you find a way, and it, it costs more to get a temporary permit to put in a temporary access as needed. But then you have to remove it after it's, after you're in there and fix whatever needs fixing.
So is that something, we would put like a temporary wooden bridge over it there?
Right, similar to what PSCNG did with the, the tower replacements. You can get the, the temporary cribbing to lay over the softer soils to build temporary access roads, but then you have to remove them.
Okay, so you're convinced that that could be done?
Yeah, it's, it's not that you can't get access, it's just unfortunately not the perfect situation, that it's not there permanently.
But this can't be the first application where this condition existed, right? That you've seen?
Uh, in my time here, yes, it's the first that's. Yeah, because, because a lot of the township has been sewered already. So this is, this is the first major extension we've had in an area like this.
Okay.
Well, is this something where if it looks like the solution's going to be some temporary scaffold and bridging material that the applicant would purchase this? And have it available in case we needed it?
Well, the, the problem, if they purchase it, then you have to have it kept in an area. I know Public Works doesn't have room for the equipment they have already, so I don't know where, where the township would.
Or is it something where the applicant? The applicant would keep it on site in a area for you or something like that?
Well, this portion of the system's intended to be turned over to the township because it starts branching off into areas where it's serving adjacent property owners. It's not serving the bulk of their development. And in fact, that's, that's one of the comments I had on this number 63 is during the public comment, it was requested, and a discussion item, that the completion of the south branch portion of this, the sewer interceptor be a requirement that it be completed as part of Phase 1, rather than being left to some unknown timeframe. And I, I had indicated to the commenter that I supported that, that request.
Let's get a sewer study.
So, so if I understand correctly, there's the potential for a problem, but there's a solution if that problem occurs?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing going for the, the likelihood of this permit is that there's other comments and conditions you have about using this sewer easement as an extension of a trail system. And trail systems are usually more likely to be approved for permits by the DEP than utility easements. So that's another incentive that's helping the likelihood of getting a permit for this easement.
Okay, Alan, are you okay with Francis's?
I'm okay with the status, with the explanation.
Okay. Any other, any other comments, amendments, changes my fellow members want on utilities? Okay, there's, there was no amendment to 63, Alan, you just wanted some clarification? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I had the amendment of requiring the completion of the south branch portion of it as part of Phase 1. That was my, that was discussed during the public comment meeting.
Okay, Francis gave amendment that Martino has. Okay, I'll, I'll.
So I just wanted to clarify myself, actually, that the completion of the south branch portion of the dock pond run sewer interceptor shall be required to be completed as a condition of Phase 1?
As, as part of Phase 1. So with the Phase 1 construction, when the Phase 1 construction's complete, this will be complete.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve on the sections utilities, Conditions 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 60, 68. As with amendment to 63, as Francis, Francis's verbiage.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Simon. You're ahead, Alan.
I just have two other points.
Okay, oh, sorry, go ahead.
On 64, regarding sewer pump stations. I, I really would have hoped that we had a design of them. We would have, I would have hoped that we would have a design of the sewer pump stations and how they fit into the environment, and no elevations have been provided. I understand that they will have to provide those. But I think it should have been provided at the, at the beginning of this application.
The condition is gonna, for the application's gonna need approval from the township engineer regardless?
Right, I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't care about the mechanics of the situation. I'm just talking about the elevation.
Okay.
Building elevations, I think they should be provided upfront when the applicant comes in for an application, that afterwards.
Well, Alan, you could have a requirement that they be designed of similar materials and textures and color palette compatible with the rest.
That sounds good.
And you can make that subject to the approval of the township landscape architect, because he normally does that for other fixtures.
I would make that motion.
So let's, let's add language in there, that approval by township engineer and landscape architect so that the landscape architect knows to include the materials that are consistent. That makes sense, Alan?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And number 65, this to me is particularly disturbing. I think it's a flaw in the, in the plans, that there are no supporting calculations provided to the board and as professionals to evaluate the conservativeness of the maximum sewage flow demand for future commercial area, which contained retail restaurants, convenience stores, hotels, et cetera. To leave this for evaluation after an approval is putting the cart before the horse. There could be many changes to the plan made if the calculations do not support the estimated demand. This might include the size of the sewer main, decrease in the area for commercial, decrease in area for, for warehousing, we don't know. And perhaps an outside consultant is needed to be brought in to evaluate this issue, which was Condition 64, I'm sorry, 65.
65.
65.
Isn't that Phase 3?
I'm sorry?
Is that for Phase 3?
But Phase 3 could actually affect Phases 1 and 2, is what I'm saying. Yes, they did a conservative estimate, we don't know how conservative that estimate was.
Well, my, my comment on that would be that it's, it's, it's an estimate, it's similar to how the traffic was estimated until there's an actual proposal. We don't know what, what the, the final numbers and flows would be, but I'm comfortable that the design of what is going to be owned and maintained by the township can handle additional flows. Anything that's affected closer to those other properties, though, is owned and maintained by the applicant. So if there are improvements or revisions required to the pump stations, they're going to be privately owned and maintained, so it'll be between the applicant and the Phase 3 developer to figure out who's going to pay for and modify anything that's installed as part of Phase 1.
Okay.
Alan, you're okay with, with the explanation?
I'm okay with that explanation.
May I be comfortable, but you're okay with it?
I'm not comfortable at all.
Okay. Is there any additional language that's needed in there, Francis? Or it's all covered in the condition?
No, I'm fine with it as currently worded.
Okay. Anybody else, 63, 64, 65, 60, the rest of utilities? Anybody, Simon? No? Sue? I'll entertain a motion to approve Utilities Conditions 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, with amendments to 63 and 64 as enumerated. sixty-eight with amendments to sixty-three and sixty-four as enumerated by Francis and, uh, discussion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve utilities, uh, uh, motion by Simon, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Andrea, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions, uh, utilities pass eight to zero. Sixty-three, sixty-four, five, six, seven, and eight as amended. Okay, fire and emergency services, there are one, two, three conditions with a couple of subbullets to seventy-one. This is, uh, section, condition sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one with three subbullets. And there are, there are no changes asked by the applicant. Um, do I see any amendments or changes or discussion by the board?
My only question is number seventy?
Yep.
The applicant shall be required by the, uh, by the construction official to conduct a radio signal strength survey. Is it the fire official or the construction official?
Fire, fire.
Fire?
Okay. So.
The chief of emergency services, correct?
Yeah, that's, they, they want to make sure if the fire, fire people are inside the building, they, they can get radio signal everywhere.
But it's not the construction?
Not the construction.
So we'll make that amendment, so, um, chief of emergency services is the correct, um?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you can just put fire official.
Fire official. Okay, Martino, you got that? Any, any other changes?
Um, I, I just had a comment on it, and that is that the, uh, we never heard anything from the applicant regarding, um, where they were gonna do their construction, uh, from, like, where, where were their trailers, where were their, uh, materials gonna be stored and so forth? Was the access to the property gonna be, uh, from Quaker Bridge Road, from Clarksville Road, uh, from, uh, you know, from, from both, uh, or, or, or what? So these, uh, all weather surfaces that emergency services requires obviously will be there, but, you know, we just didn't get any, um, definitive answer, uh, because we didn't ask any questions about, uh, how they're gonna face their construction.
Okay, but the, how, how is, how is that, uh, is that under, would that be under site plan? Why, um, not fire and emergency services, or you think it should be the one?
I just, I just brought it up here because emergency services is gonna require the all re- all, um, all weather road surface access, uh, for a certain time.
Okay, in case during, in case during construction, there's a, there's a fire breaks out?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and you don't want an emergency service vehicle getting bogged down in mud?
Correct.
Okay. Francis, any comment on that? I think I saw something somewhere regarding, how, how construction and equipment will be placed. Did I? Am I misspeaking?
Well, they have, uh, soil erosion and sediment control plans as part of the set, which include their proposed construction entrances. Uh, normally during the pre-construction meeting with township staff, the developer and their contractors will talk about anything additional, like what Simon had mentioned about construction trailers or storage of materials or temporary water storage requirements, or if there's gonna be any fuel tanks kept on site during construction, so those, those are all topics we cover at that time.
Okay. So I mean, are you okay with Francis's?
That, yes.
Okay, anybody else, any comments on fire and emergency services? Anything, fire emergency service is gonna be approved by the chief anyway, so, right? Anybody comment? I'll entertain a motion to approve fire and emergency services, condition sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one with subbullets.
So moved.
Moved by Alan, second by Annis, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero. That's fire and emergency services. Okay. We're in the seventies now, we're getting there.
Yeah, we all, we all are.
Good, good comeback.
Yeah.
I didn't have another.
Okay. This is, this, this section's called other, so it's a compilation of additional conditions that don't fall under the, uh, previous categories. However, all these other conditions looks like they were accepted by the applicant without any amendments. So I'm asking, does the board have any comments in other conditions seventy-two through eighty-two? And then, Andrew, I didn't forget about your last, uh, condition that we'll address after. So seventy-two through eighty-two with a couple of subbullets, and, um, anybody have any comments on these?
With regard to seventy-three?
Yep.
Um, the applicant, uh, is doing a phase one A study of the historic, uh, Clark House, which is still not completed. Well, I would indicate a space one A could lead to another phase or not. If another phase, uh, is required, the applicant should be required to do that in terms of the study. And if the, uh, cultural assessment finds that there is some historic significance with regard to whatever, the nation remains are there, whether they should be preserved in place, the applicant should be required to abide by that study.
Okay, I, I.
The recommendations of the study.
I, I have no problem with that. Anybody else?
I assume that DP recommendation would be, um, mandatory, no? Or would it?
Recommendation to recommendation.
I mean, if the DP says they have to go from one A to the next step, they generally would have to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So do we need any amended language here, or it's acceptable, you're just making comments regarding, you know, further clarification?
I, I just think that we should say that if there's further study required, that it be done. If there are, uh, if there are requirements in terms of how you preserve the site, that should be done, that may require, uh, revision to their site plan.
Uh, sure, so how about if, if the applicant, uh, the applicant shall be required to abide by the recommendations of the study?
Sounds good.
Or the assessment?
Uh, any, uh, any other amendments in these section other? Uh, hearing none, seeing none, no, no heads nodding, no hands raised. I'll entertain a motion to approve the other conditions seventy-two through eighty-two as, uh, with number seventy-three amended as discussed. So moved, Annis, I'm sorry, Alan, go ahead.
What's, quick question, wasn't there another, uh, suggestion that the conditions be recorded in the deed?
Yes, I can comment on that. Um, we, the, we're gonna do a developers agreement, and that will have, um, the conditions incorporated, and that can get recorded. The reason for maybe preferring to do that is because if, if for whatever reason the project doesn't get built, or whatever, you have a recorded deed out there that, um, will show up in the title. It's probably more efficient to do it in, in the form of a developers agreement, which will get recorded, so it accomplishes the objective.
The developers' agreement will get, get recorded.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and you're okay with that, Alan?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so I had a motion by Annis to approve the other conditions seventy-three through eighty-two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor, all in favor approving, uh, other conditions seventy-three through eighty-two? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any can, abstentions? Okay, conditions, other conditions seventy-two through eighty-two, pass eight to zero. Okay.
Shall I read mine now?
Yes, please, um, let me just, give me a moment to grab your sheet here. Okay, Andrew, you had asked for. You got?
Okay, no warehouse shall store hazardous materials as defined by the U.S. Department of Transportation Hazard Classification System or by the state of New Jersey. Hazardous materials to be used solely for on-site cleaning and maintenance of warehouse facilities may be properly stored on the premises and handled according to law.
May, but I don't.
I, I would make, uh, one slight, uh, modification and change the word may to must.
Um, which one are you looking at? A warehouse needs to be found into the, in hazardous, uh.
Aren't there rules and regulations?
No, it means they're allowed to. No, they don't have to store them, they just, they're allowed to have them.
Aren't, aren't there state laws?
Yeah, there's, there are OSHA requirements.
Right, now, if you wanted to store hazardous materials, you probably need a specific kind of, um.
Container. Right, you have to have a certain kind of container that's labeled a certain way and so forth and so on.
So, yeah, there's, uh, there are, oh, there's cleaning materials and stuff in limited quantities that people might use or maintenance materials, yeah. And they, and, oh, they have to do, uh, they probably have to do an MSDS sheet and give it to employees, and there's a whole set of rules and stuff like that. But, but basically, I don't, that the warehouse itself will not be storing hazardous materials as a warehouse.
Like propane tanks for the, uh, for the lifts would be.
And, yeah, as an OSHA material, but, or if they need something to, you know, to clean the, um, uh, whatever types of, uh, lift trucks or something like that, but.
Isn't it a little redundant regarding the non, non-cleaning materi- like, cleaning materials are gonna be kept on premises, obviously, they need to clean, clean things. But hazardous materials defined by U.S. Department of Transportation Hazard Classification System, I, I don't believe they'll store things there because they're not allowed.
Um, I don't, there's, I don't want anybody building a warehouse, I mean, somebody's storing those somewhere, you can build a warehouse to store them. I don't, I don't want that to be here.
That's, then I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, I don't think they're gonna do that.
Um.
And I have a motion to adopt. Can I just make a comment about that, cuz it was pointed out to me that, you know, something like whiteout is, I guess, considered a hazardous material, which seems fairly benign, but, I mean, without knowing what, you know, what hazardous materials are actually defined by the transportation hazard classifications?
Yeah, there's, um, there's a nine classi- there's a set of carded classifications when you put them on a truck. There's warning signs on the trucks, and, um, those are hazardous materials.
Yeah, but, the, Ms. Ms. Chair, just for clarification, in the way it's written, hazardous material, hazardous material has a very broad definition. So, for example, Staples Materials Store couldn't be there cuz of whiteout. You couldn't have Home Depot because of paint, you couldn't have, um, you know, just about anything under the sun. Solar panels have hazardous materials in it. We, the prepackaged materials are frequently hazardous. So, for example, I had a one, uh, scatteraway that had nail, uh, stickers that you put on nails, that was considered hazardous material. So it, it's, it's not, it really doesn't work. I think what, what you're trying to say is like exclusively a sto- store hazardous materials, uh, you know, that are not in diminutinous quantities, um, or used for like typical warehouse type operations like Staples, Home Depot, you know, that will have tons of materials that will be classified as hazardous, but they're in small diminutious amounts, and they're not like the chemical vats or the drums or whatever you're thinking of.
Well, basically, would a truck that's moving those materials be labeled with, with a card on them that says hazardous material?
I, I don't know the answer to that question about the trucks.
Basically, trying to prevent, um, these, these types of hazardous.
You don't wanna warehouse, what, if I, I'm, let me see if I could summarize. You don't wanna warehouse built that is going to store just paint or paint thinner or some other combination of hazardous materials?
Chemicals.
Or chemicals, or chemicals, please. And, so.
Radioactive, there, there's a whole list, I don't have it with me, but, yeah.
So, right, so if I understand, you don't wanna warehouse that has just focused on hazardous materials, but if they had cleaning materials for the premises, a whiteout or a couple pan- cans of paint because they need to paint the, you know, a room?
That's no, that's no problem, I, but, I think we already said.
You don't want any warehouses built that are exclusive to hazardous materials.
Or partially exclusive.
Yeah, exclusive hazardous material, I mean, when you walk down the street, Costco is storing all of those materials as in a, a sort of a warehouse bag. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, when you're, you're taking a look at packaged products, um, for consumers or being, you know, through Home Depot or Staples or whoever's the, the actual distributor, they're all have hazardous materials in it, most of, you know, there's tons of them. What you're trying to prevent is, uh, sort of an exclusive hazardous storage where you're, you're, you're dealing with that, a particular, um, hazardous chemical or, you know, a, a site that would be, um, outside of the normal warehousing and distribution you would have.
Can I, can I, can I interrupt, make a recommendation? No, no, no building, um, shall contain more than one percent of hazardous materials or half of one percent hazardous, hazardous materials as defined. If you do that, then cleaning materials is fine, whiteout is fine, you know, maybe they make a lot of mistakes in the whiteout. But, but.
People still using whiteout?
No, they don't. Um, but what I'm, what I'm trying to get at, if you limit the, the one percent of the square footage of the warehouse, you're gonna read, you can eliminate the chance that the warehouse.
Is that something?
Totally eliminate the.
Yeah, is that something enforceable?
Well, certificate of occupancy is what's this warehouse gonna be used for?
I, I'm, I'm also not looking to have a warehouse that's designed for, um, you know, specifically for storing hazardous materials also. So I would assume that would fit within there.
So no warehouse will be designed to utilize?
So you wanna do this sort of a limit? No ha- warehouse will just store, uh.
To be exclusive to ha- I, I.
Well, all right, I can put, I can put something, yeah. Yeah, I'm definitely drawing. Um, no warehouse, we can put, no warehouse shall store hazardous materials in, um, quantities greater than one percent, does that work out? Just then? Yeah, how, how do we, how do we know that?
One, one percent of ADS. I, I'm, I'm trying to come up with the language, but, um.
I was, I was just talking, I think we're classified under like a standard storage use group and not a hazardous storage use group.
Okay, there you go.
So would, and I see, um, Mr. Jepson, can, he can say, what would be the best way you would, you would state this? Should we say that the, um, warehouse was, we're only accepting the warehouse to be classified under a certain group?
Andrea? You, you've heard some. If I understood correctly what. What you're saying is your warehouse will only store something called standard storage or group. Use standard use group. So we can just say that the warehouse will only store standard storage use group, that's it?
So what, what would be?
And not hazardous storage use group.
All right, okay, so what, what's the exact wording that will work on this?
You're really parsing this very tightly. Um, I think there's some discrepancy here, you just heard the discussions about paints, thinners, formaldehydes, all kinds of little things you could have. Um, I'm not sure you wa- it, it's an OSHA thing that's gonna be regulated. I, I think the half a percent or something like that would be good, but you don't want storage of hazardous materials.
Right.
You know, just complete hazardous materials. If it's, it's part and parcel of like a Kroger or somebody's, um, typical merchandise, I think you're okay with that. But you can't store hazardous materials in any of these warehouses. And I think you're looking for a number, an extent, like five percent?
I'm looking for a description of something that.
I, I like this, I like the standard, um, you know, the language for standard warehouse.
Yeah, cuz not, we, there's no way we're gonna measure this percent, so.
Correct, and I agree with you there.
What, you know, if so, say there's something and, uh, there's some kind of thing, and maybe it has a tiny lithium battery in it. That's a standard item, but. has a tiny lithium battery in it, that's a standard item, but, if, I don't necessarily want them storing car batteries, to be honest.
Andrea, how about all warehouses shall only store standard storage use material as defined by US Department of Transportation?
Okay, so.
Is that fine?
Are you okay with that?
Okay, so let's say all warehouses, we have to say what standard is.
Shall store only.
Shall.
Store only standard storage use material, and then as defined by the US Department of Transportation.
So what are we, what are we, by standard material, you know, we're just saying, what is the right term for this warehouse?
This mayor, I believe it's, it's storage use group defined by the building code, so that the, the construction code permit will classify.
So all warehouses shall only store materials in the standard use group as defined by the building code, does that work?
Yes, for me.
Storage use. It's storage use group.
Okay, so how about all warehouses shall, all warehouses shall store only, okay, so just, these stores, all warehouses shall store materials under the standard use group as defined by the building group, only materials?
Storage use group as defined by the building code.
Okay, shall store, okay, so all warehouses shall store materials as defined by the storage, storage use group as defined by the building code. I'm sorry, standard storage use group.
Right.
So based, based on that definition, no nuclear waste or hazardous materials is gonna come and be stored there, but they may have a can of paint, paint thinner, whiteout, and so on to help maintain the building.
Okay, so, Martina, do you have a, somebody on that?
Martina, you have that?
In the standard use group?
No, no, so you're not trying to define what's stored in the building, you're trying to define how the building's designed, so a building's use is defined by different classifications, so one of the classifications is hazard, another classification is storage, so you want the building design to comply with the storage classification.
Right, but I want to find with the standard storage classification.
Not standard, just storage, the use of storage.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that would help, because we did, we did talk to the fire official, and he said that there's specific codes, if you want to, if you want to store hazardous materials.
Right, so when the building permit application comes in, it'll.
VERSA, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes eight to zero. Okay. I believe that that is it. We did it, team, we got through eighty, eighty-something conditions. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application with all the conditions, the eighty-two, eighty-three conditions that we voted on and approved as amended, and the additional list of design waivers as, as amended. Do I hear a motion?
I will move to approve the application PB21.
Planner, if reviewed shopping and encounter an application such as those are proposed, they don't get to the, a good evaluation, so this is not a traditional project. A primary issue to be resolved is that trucks utilize access to the site from north at Route 571, and then returning north onto Clarksville Road. There's been no study from 71 and Clarksville Road, tractor trailers turning left onto Clark, not stay in the turning lane given the geometry of the intersection. No amount of sign, he has the culverts reconstruct us in Clarksville Road, where we have many commission of how tractor trailers would seen. Now, the traffic engineer utilized can maybe experience throughout the day and evening of the turnpike at exit eight, eight, onto my trips from home over fifteen to twenty-year period. While this is anecdotal, I'd also note that the steep during all hours of the day as trucks town, there's always pride itself on its excellent school. We have teenage drivers who are newly licensed going to and from the high school, and needs thorough review. We also note that the buildings are all on the same plane, they're viewed, from my opinion. In looking at the purposes, also does not advance another purpose resulted congestion. Those are my thoughts on the application.
Pull the roll.
Mr. Bag.
Yes. Motion to approve, application passes five to three.
Thank you very much.
Correction, six to two, correction on the approval, six to two. Okay, at, at this point, I open the public comments portion, limited to fifteen minutes, anybody wish to come up to the mic, you could speak for three minutes, Sam has the clock, fifteen minutes in total, thank you, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is John Hinsdale, I live at thirty-eight Quaker Road in West Windsor. My comments do not relate to any application before this planning board, whether closed, ongoing, or anticipated. My comments address the general attitude of this board in the last few years toward preservation of the environment here in West Windsor. All these recent commercial developments in town bring with them added traffic and pollution, which has been brought to the attention of this board in this room by adults and children. The newborn baby born in West Windsor today will breathe the fumes from these developments for eighteen years, by the time he graduates our fine school system in the year 2040. In that year 2040, how many members of this board will have stuck around town for eighteen years to join that baby in breathing these fumes? Probably not many, no, surely many members of this board will have long since moved away from town and left all these developments you are approving lately for the rest of the town to deal with in your absence. These approvals are like these board members' way of flipping the bird to the town on their way out the door. It's like their way of taking a giant environmental dump on our carpet and then fleeing the scene, and you've no right to do that, no right. This land was here long before you showed up, and by right should still be in livable condition long after you've moved away, but you're not gonna let that happen, are you? No, you're gonna ruin it for everybody, and then hightail it out of here, and you've no right, absolutely no right. I know you can say, oh, leave us alone, we're volunteers, well, maybe y'all can un-volunteer from the job and stop doing harm to the township. Being a volunteer does not entitle you to ruin the township. All of you who are approving these projects should just resign and go home, there is the door, it is yours to walk out of. You are agents of harm on this board, you are not useful here, and you are not wanted here.
John Mulcahy too here for a try, first, I want to say, Alan, thank you, you spoke for the residents of West Windsor and what we care about. Yes, thank you, Alan, first, I, I only wish that you had more than one colleague that saw the wisdom and voted with you, but, thank you, Alan. I also want to say, I'm just absolutely astonished on, I spoke before to the town council and planning board about the variance process, I'm astonished that the number, the waiver, item number two, about the loading docks, did not even get deliberation, we're talking one hundred forty-seven versus nine hundred, if we want to add two hundred square feet to a house, we have to jump through hoops, they want to add six times the number of loading docks, which means six times the number of trucks, and six times the amount of traffic, it didn't even get deliberated. I think, given the unknowns about the traffic, about the environmental concerns, about the fumes, about the noise, about everything else, why rush in and give six times the waiver? It just makes no sense to me, and it didn't even get deliberated.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for letting.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Tom Tonan, Prince Junction, and thank you for letting me speak. My question is for mayor, it is my understanding that you made a statement that the tax revenue from these warehouses would be fifteen to twenty million dollars a year, which is a curious statement, well, first, did you make that statement, and are you aware that the going rate for warehouses in the area here is very easily proven from records to be roughly one to one and a half dollars per square foot, which means that these warehouses would bring in only above five to six million dollars. So my question, do you have evidence to support this counter trend for West Windsor? Can you present that now, tonight?
It's a public comment period, I'll be happy to talk to you after it's done.
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
It's a public, it's a public comment period, I'll be happy after the meeting is done to talk to you.
No, do you, you do have, you're saying you do have documented evidence, and tonight, I could come to you and you show it to me, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jackie Alberts, I have often sat in those seats that you are sitting in now, six years on planning board, including chair, six years on council, all the time I served, and all the time you serve, your first interest should be the people of West Windsor? Its environment, and its future, and its future. No, Matt, I understand there is a balancing act between a desire to take a major piece off the chessboard in terms of affordable housing and this project. I understand that balancing act, I did it for twelve years. You have failed completely to represent the public, the long-term public interests of this town in terms of our environment, our quality of life, and our property values. You have failed in your conditions, earnest as though they may be, to have tied this developer to a series of conditions that will effectively limit the harm of this project. There is a not enough meet in the conditions of this approval to effectively end the negative impacts that we are going to see, not one year, not two years, but thirty years in the future of this township. One of the problems about land is, once it's built on, it's gone. We're not going to see green at cyanide anymore. The green of cyanide itself is one of the problems that your conditions fail to meet. Your conditions do not address the absolute negative harmful air pollution effects that are going to occur merely by shifting the dirt to make this project happen in phase one. There is insufficient attention to the details of a massive project by everyone except those two gentlemen at the end of the board. Alan, thank you for your service.
I am Jeffrey Shore, I live at Nine Strathmore Place. Recently, I was in a car accident where I hit another, another passenger vehicle. I walked away, I had a little back pain for a couple of days, the guy in the other car walked away with nothing, no scratches, nothing. We would not have been so lucky if one of us had been driving a tractor trailer truck. People don't just walk away from accidents with tractor trailer trucks. When that starts happening, and your children, and your neighbors, and your friends, and your relatives start getting seriously killed, start getting seriously injured or killed, folks, I hate to say this, the blood of them is on your hands tonight, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for your time today, I'm profoundly grateful to you, Alan and Simon, for standing up, I'm extremely embarrassed to have the rest of you as representing the township interest tonight. This, you folks, not you two, this is your legacy, a parking lot in beautiful West Windsor, you should be embarrassed about this, and the price, fifteen million dollars, it's not worth one accident, it's not worth one injury, it's not worth a debt. That is your legacy, you folks who have voted for this monstrous, humongous, massive project, which you do not understand, tonight, it's been clear to me that this is way above your heads, way above your heads. It's clear from the questions you asked, from the understanding, you should have brought in experts to evaluate this, this is something that you folks are out of your league, and you have subjected West Windsor in perpetuity to this bad decision, starting with this settlement, thank you.
Thank you, Alan, and thank you, Simon, and Hemat, you are a most destructive mayor in the history of mankind, shame, shame on you as a mayor, supporting this warehouse in the, with the West Windsor, you, I consider you as the most destructive mayor in the history of mankind.
Good evening, Alexandria Theresa, thirty-one Arnold Drive, Mr. Schechtel and Mr. Pinko, thank you so much for voting on behalf of the residents of West Windsor, and Mr. Schechtel, thank you so much for so eloquently putting exactly what we've been trying to say in public comment as best as we can, in, in whatever form we could, whether it be Facebook or here, wherever. I want to speak on behalf of my ten-year-old and my seven-year-old who came here and spoke to all of you a couple of weeks ago, and asked you to prioritize the environment, the animals, their lives, the lives of their friends, and many of you were dismissive, dismissive of that, and I understand that it's not an easy situation, it was not an easy, it's, it's not easy to say no to something as large as this. The simple way is not always the best way, just saying yes, just simply to have something end is not always the best way, sometimes we have to make hard decisions in order to make the right decision, and the right. the right decision tonight was not made. And I want you all to understand that my children have to grow up here. I grew up here. I know more than many of you how much this has developed because I've been living here. My parents moved here in nineteen eighty-three. I am a product of West Windsor and I came and moved back to West Windsor with my children. And I can't even imagine that this is what I came back to, that I chose to leave a different town to come here and this is what I'm looking at. It's shameful. And you did not represent the youth of this, of this community who will have to deal with the legacy of what you're going, of what's happening. So I would like to speak to the people who are here. We still have the county. We still have the state. The fight is not over. We will continue to fight because you didn't represent us. We will continue. And you know what? Now that we're at the county level, we'll bring the rest of the towns with us. This is, we will do everything that we can do to make sure that this does not happen. But I'm so sorry that you made this decision because you will, I know that I will go to sleep and be able to rest my head tonight, but I don't know, for those of you who voted yes, if you will be able to, because I certainly wouldn't be able to if I was sitting in your shoes.
Hello, my name is Ethan Schenker, two twelve Hendrickson, and I'm a high schooler of High School South. And I would like to comment on this decision. As someone who walks to school every single day and is someone whose sibling will end up walking to school every single day by the time these changes have been made, I'm concerned for the safety of my peers and the future students of South, Maurice Hawk, and just this community in general. In the past decade, truck crashes, incidents, accidents are up by over thirty percent, I think it's thirty-one percent if I believe, if I'm correct. More trucks on the road does not reduce that by any means. And I think this board expects to reap the benefits of some ugly warehouse without the effects that it will inevitably have on this community. Thank you.
Sorry, before you speak, right, the public comment sections, it's limited to fifteen minutes, right? So I'm going to, I'm going to allow the two of you to speak and then the meeting will be adjourned. So please continue.
You guys were so thorough with dissecting minutia with everything except for stopping the trucks on Clarksville. There was a plan B for almost everything, but no plan B for what happens when the county rejects restricting trucks on Clarksville. You just moved right on from that. In regards to some of the environmental stuff, the scientific stuff was so far over your head, you weren't even capable of coming up with the language to make it even close to acceptable. It seems like you're just kicking it up the road because you're not qualified to make this decision and you don't want to get sued, so you're letting the county handle it. So I just want to say that you're going to get recalled. We want you all out of here. And getting the twenty-five hundred signatures we got took no time. It's going to take no time at all to get the signatures to remove, you guys. So thank you two gentlemen. Thank you for being our voices. Thank you for representing the people, Alan and Simon. We are so grateful for the only people here who actually cared enough to do the right thing. And we need people who want to do the right thing representing us. None of you qualify, except for you two, two you two gentlemen. So gratitude to you. Thank you.
John Max Dejan, fourteen Indianman Road. Alan, Simon, thank you again. The rest of you, you have no guts whatsoever. I've been in this town since nineteen eighty-three. I raised a daughter here. I have my grandkids here, okay? But you are putting their lives in danger. That's what you did tonight. I have a four-year-old, two four-year-olds, two seven-year-olds and a ten-year-old. Okay, I hope they live long enough, okay? Because you guys have just put their life in danger. All right? You have, you are gutless, totally gutless. I know, ever since you got here, you wanted to go home. Okay, Mr. Hobbineman? Okay, I am so disappointed in you, Andrea. And like the lady says, we're coming after you, mayor. We are coming after you big time. You lied to us. You lied to everybody. I didn't vote for you, okay? Because you didn't deserve my vote. I knew you were lying from the beginning. But you know what? We're coming after you. You're not getting another term and we're going to try to make this one short.
Meeting adjourned.